Call the meeting to order. It's nine o'clock for Lion County Board of County Commissioners Thursday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It is nine A M. Day's agenda. Action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agenda. Please to avoid meeting disruptions, place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. The board reserves the right to take items in a different order to accomplish business in the most efficient manner. Items may be combined for consideration. Items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions and comments by the general public. Any such restriction may be reasonable and may restrict the time, place, and manner of the comments, but not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards. Members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting, may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And our meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for London. Roll call. I have all commissioners in chambers today. Invocation will be given today by Archie Walker of the Smith Valley.
Travis.
Travis. Okay, Travis here. We're looking to see who's here. Please write.
Father, your word says that the earth is the Lord's in the fullness therein. It would be wrong for us to think that we could govern anything outside of your sovereign will. Father, I pray for wisdom today, discernment. I pray for this meeting to be a blessing to you as an establishment of what you have placed on this earth, that you've put these commissioners in their, in their positions to help people come to know you and to know better relationships with you. And so as we gather to, as we gather together today, Lord, we ask your blessings to be on upon this time. We ask that you would not let anything that would happen that would bring you disgrace, but everything that would bring you honor and glory. We thank you, Lord, for the Lord Jesus Christ giving his life for us so that we might have a relationship with you and know you. We pray that you would give us peace today and the peace that passes understanding would come to us through the presence of your son in our lives. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Commissioner Jacobson.
Pledge allegiance to your flag.
Thank you. Item four, public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendaized. It's anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation have asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda action item, but before the board takes any action. Do I have any public comments? Okay. This is C check.
Mary Ann C. Check from Stagecoach. And I just wanted to share with you that after the last board meeting, commissioners meeting, we took a drive down Miller Lane and it has the thirty mile an hour and it was very, very, very hard to drive thirty miles an hour. It was painful to drive thirty miles an hour down this long road with no one there, no houses on the sides. So I just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any further comments for public?
But I did it.
Appreciate that. All right. Being no further public comment, we will go for possible action review and adoption of the agenda. Everybody review and can we have a motion on that? Any changes from the commissioners or the public? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion.
Mister Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes five zero. And we have, it's exactly nine oh five, time certain at nine oh five A M. For possible action proclaiming the month of January as National Radon Action Month in Lion County. It's requested by Chris Kelly of U N R. Yes ma'am.
Okay, so I'm actually Holly Gatsky filling in for Kelly since I was coming for the next agenda item anyhow, area director for extension. Would you like me to read the proclamation or are you reading it? What would you prefer for process?
Um, you can, you can read it for us. That'd be great.
That's okay. Yeah, exactly.
He volunteers.
I did it. I did it to myself. Okay, a proclamation declaring January twenty twenty-four as National Radon Action Month in Nevada. Whereas many Nevada residents don't know about radon, yet need to know for the safety. For the safety and safe, for the safety and health of their families as radon is colorless, odorless, naturally occurring radioactive gas that is the primary cause of brain lung cancer among non-smokers, the second leading cause of lung cancer in smokers. And whereas the U S E P A estimates twenty-one thousand people in the U S die each year from lung cancer caused by indoor radon exposure and lung and bronchitis cancer kill more people in a year than any other cancer. And whereas lung cancer kills more, more women than breast cancer and Nevadans are at high risk, higher risk than the national average. And whereas one in four homes in Nevada has elevated levels of radon, yet any, many, any home in Nevada may have elevated levels of radon even if neighboring homes do not, and living in a home with an average radon level of four pickle curries per liter of air possesses a similar risk of developing lung cancer smoking half a pack of cigarettes a day. And whereas the E P A states buyers have the right to know radon level of any home they consider purchasing. And whereas testing is the only way to know that a home has elevated levels of radon and testing is easy and inexpensive and when identified, homes can be fixed. Whereas the University of Nevada Reno Extensions Nevada Radon Education Program and the U S Environmental Protection Agency supports efforts to encourage all Nevada residents to test their homes for radon, mitigate low elevated levels of radon and have new homes built with radon reducing materials and features. Now, therefore, the Lion County Board of, Board of County Commissioners do hereby proclaim January twenty twenty-fourth as National Radon Action Month in Lion County, adopted this eighteenth day of January, two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Yours was a little different than ours, but I did, did notice that all the points are there, just in a different order.
Okay, okay.
So, do we have any comments, questions? If we have any public comments or questions? Good. And we will have a possible action to proclaim the month. Do I have a motion on that? Except the.
Mister Hockeney. Here, Hockeney, I'll make a motion that we proclaim January as National Radon Action Month in Lion County.
Second.
Hey, motion by Commissioner Jacobson, a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And if I can just mention, if anybody wants more information, certainly we have the test kits available in our office. You can go in and Judy will be there to help you. And that's available for anybody in the public. The other thing is if you want more information on this topic, just Google U N R Extension Radon and that gets you to the page that tells you where test kits are, how to mitigate your home, how to be safe. And sadly, the cancer rate in Nevada is very high and we want to fit.
Okay, Commissioner Keller.
Are you still working with U S D A and on going into the homes of, I know in the past that U S D A went in and did it for the needy or some other, you know, hardships.
I actually, to be honest, Chris is the one to ask those questions, you know, but the reality is, is that I know that that program has ebbed and flowed. So that's why it's hard for me to say that that support is there or not. And, and so I don't want to answer, you know, anything but the truth. So definitely you can go onto the website and information is there and or certainly the phone numbers are there to call the people that would be able to provide those answers because it is very important to figure out the pathways to mitigate. You're right.
Thank you.
Okay, then we will run to six B, time certain, nine oh five A M. For presentation only, Holly Gretzky, Northern Area Director, or you're already there, will be providing a presentation updating the Lion County Board of County Commissioners regarding program highlights and reorganization with the extension model for U N R Lion County Extension during the past six months.
Great, thank you very much. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to do a real quick slide presentation. I realize time is limited, so I'm going to move very fast, okay? But I just wanted to, if you can go to the next slide. Um, just give a real brief information for those of you that don't know extension. We've been running nearly a hundred and fifty years in the state of Nevada. We provide residence, we're kind of the Publix University. We provide residence with research-based education to improve their lives and address critical public issues. And I'm going to point out this because we ever actually, thank you, we actually cover six areas, natural resources, horticulture, agriculture, health, community development, economic development, and youth and family development, which most of you would recognize as a portion of that is our four H programs and youth programs in the county. We just want to know, let you know that all of this is written and designed and completely a partnership with you as a county commission, the public, different agencies within the, the community and the county. That is how we make things happen is through partnerships and collaboration. So I'm just going to give you a real quick rundown of what we've been dominantly achieving in the, in the county for the last, well, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, to give you a quick report on things. Basically, Hillary covers the, the county exceptionally well in making sure that we have teach life skills to youth with hands-on interactions and impact the lives of a hundred and twenty-four youth in the counties. And that was in twenty-two, twenty-three. It's growing with her great work and, and she works with twenty-four leaders and that keeps growing as well in, in, in making that happen. So those are volunteer people. That's how we get more done with less, right? So, you know, they're engaged in the, you know, Lion County Youth Junior Livestock Show. She has provided a quality assurance training to use so that's on the hands, on the ground type of training in three locations. The youth here go and participate in statewide program, which is the Nevada four H Expo. They've been working with Silver Springs Middle School Robotics, partnering with Silver State Youth Livestock Show to increase participation and build the show and do different side programs like Health Rocks and, and things like that. So I'm just going to give you the highlights real quick of that in that she's been working and increasing enrollments and building new clubs with robotics and outdoor adventure as an example. And she just told me of another one. Smith Valley's got a brand new club. She's been working hard on kind of reaching every corner of the county, just so you know. And so that's, that's growing all the time. There's broader and increased participation in the, in the events with, with those kind of interesting new clubs, not necessarily all livestock or cooking and some of the things that four H has been engaged in traditionally, but also building on these, these interesting new areas. But Hillary is exceptionally good in, in being able to recognize that four H really grows youth's life skills and gets them as adults that participate, volunteer, tend to have a much higher level of engagement in post-secondary education, becoming leaders in their communities in different areas. And, and she recognizes that you need to have the little things moved into these clubs, activities and all of those things, such as increasing the amount of youth that actually do a record book. So they have to record what they're doing and plan and make it happen. And those little basic skills of introducing, figuring out a project they want to do and they choose, get passionate about, plan for it, carry it out and then report on it is our, our basic skills that you're needing every day in so many ways. And they learn it young, they get engaged into it. So I just want to give Hillary credit for that because not, not all of our counties are as, as, as good at that, that type of thing. And, and so those clubs, not only are they increasing size, we're not just going for numbers and contact with youth, but we're making a difference in those, those young people's lives. And, and just a couple of little examples, the, the council for four H actually gave the three seniors in that last year, twenty-two, twenty-three, they were awarded color, college scholarships to say, hey, you've been in four H all these years. Let's, you know, congratulations and move them forward that way. So as a group, it's file highly supportive for those youth. One member of the, the Lion County actually completed, competed in the National Shooting Sports and another one has become a National Shooting Sports Ambassador. So not only are we growing them for within the county activities, but beyond. We also had, in that last year, we still had Judy, another duty on in ours team that did SNAP Ed education. That was a hundred percent grant funded. Just so you know, she was in second and third grade classes in Dayton, Fernley, Silver Stage and Urington Elementary where the kids learned about foods and where they come from, healthy selection of foods. And they were actually sampling and eating vegetables so they could get some real hands-on thing. The other thing that happens in those environments is they work with the school district in, in, in assessing the lunchroom in the school, giving them ideas of how to have things around the youth and talking about healthy choices. So vegetables become cool, not something, you know, you turn your nose up. And one of the cool things that Judy got them doing is they actually started putting a, a share cart. So if, if a kid doesn't like this thing on their plate of things, they put it on there and haven't touched it. They put it on the share cart and other kids get to eat that. And they actually greatly reduce the waste in the, in the school system and the, the nutritional department in the school district has been hugely supportive. I can tell you Judy's retired. That position is not filled at this moment because we're excited that we've gotten the SNAP Ed for the whole state running through our program. But sadly, the bureaucratic process behind that's bogged us down a bit and turning around and getting some of these positions filled. But it is a three-year grant. We will be going again. Okay. So I just thought I'd let you know that SNAP Ed programming, teaching youth about food and we'll be looking at concentrating on communities, maybe even beyond youth about healthy eating. So that'll be a part of it. We had, we just mentioned the radon and of course, our office is always open for people wanting more information and guidance on education for local citizens. So I'm going to keep rolling real fast here and move on to what we're doing in realignment within our system to get things going. And just so you know, I mean, our goal is, is to have impactful programming on the ground with you all. That is what we're about. And so we're working with in every county in, in, in the state. But when we're here, we, we have our staff on the ground. Our goal is to make sure that we're serving the needs. So we go in, find the needs in communities and you have so many diverse communities. We recognize that. So we not want to know what those community needs are and, and how to, how to look at that in those potentially six areas that we're to cover and make that happen. I can say that we want strong connection with our community and quality programming. But we recognize that we've had trouble having our extension educator position filled. You're not the only county with that problem. So this, we've taken some time to step back. You guys haven't had an empty position for that long. Some other counties like Churchill has been a long time and failed searches. I'm not going to do the same thing over and over and expect a different result. So we've looked at realigning and relooking at how we do things. And that's what I'm here to talk to you about, get feedback. It's a conversation. We're moving forward and I want to make sure that we're moving in the right way. But our staffing plan wants to create an alignment so that we have better connections of statewide programs coming into the rural counties. We've got excellent programs out there. We're going to make that happen. So what I'm looking at is instead of hiring what we called the extension educator, which historically was, we hired somebody with an expertise and they would help this county and other, and it was always an, an area that was needed in the county. But we also expected them to connect and be a liaison with the county and other organizations within the county, figure out what those needs are and connect them back, support the staff and youth. And the reality is, is that not many people wanted that job. Okay. And the other reality is those that are doing it and working really hard are working too hard and telling me, I'm not being able to do this as well as I should because I'm stretched so many directions. So we're going to split that apart. And we're talking about hiring in Lion County, a, a extension county coordinator. And we're going to give them that role of connecting and being the liaison and connection with the county and identifying those needs, connecting and bringing programming in and doing that extremely well because that's the core foundation of what we do. And then the expertise thing, we're going to separate into other positions. So Lion, I, I'll be honest, other counties were having to cluster to do this because we've had a salary increase from the state this year. We have another one mandated for next year and we need that because we had positions not even being applied for because our salaries were lower than the school district and a few other things. So this is a positive change for our system, but I had meant that we had to step back and look at what we were doing, how we do it and how to do it better with basically the team we have, right? And, and figure out how to be more efficient. This plan is doing that. Lion County is a big county with a lot of communities and you guys have the fastest growing communities in, in the northern area that I deal with. So because of that, we're going to put a coordinator in for you guys alone. And I actually am proposing in discussion with you that we actually maybe add another little part-time position in the Dayton area because I believe the growth in firmly and all of the unique communities across this county require a little more staff. And with the growth in property tax that is sitting there, we can do that within the budget that's occurring. Okay. So I'm, I'm proposing that what this slide is, is it shows you what you've got right now, which you've got Hillary working on the youth programs across the, the county. And you have other programs that get brought in like radon and, and answering questions and a few other things. We can build that second part up better and we can support Hillary to handle all of the young families moving into firmly and Dayton better. Okay. So that other count, other communities don't get less, we get more services and, and support through the whole county. So on the proposed in the blue, we have those youth four H development programs. And Hillary has an excellent, not only did she get a big grant for expanding the shooting sports program in, in the county, across the county, but she also got a Nevada Next Gen Grant, ninety-five thousand dollars. So yeah, she's a mover and shaker. Okay. And what that does is it's funds for communities to build leadership, entrepreneur and mental health gaps for youth. And this is to bolster gaps that were expanded and built deeper during COVID. So Hillary's just got those funds. We're really excited. She's looking at partnering with the school district, possibly the Boys and Girls Club and framing out how to get those programs on the ground. So we got to give her the time, space and then make sure to plug that in across the whole county. And the other thing is, is that we can bring in other extension education programs to rural counties, especially Lion. And, and one example is, is that there's programs all over the place in the rural areas and in Washoe and there's a ton of programs in Clark County. And one that I, I just comes to mind is there's an excellent business development program. They've now put a lot of those classes online and they are available, but our people out here don't know that that is available and we could bring people in person to complement that. So there's an example where I believe that this new position, the county coordinator would be able to enhance those other program areas quite easily and efficiently with what's already going on if it matches your needs. That's the idea is we want somebody on the ground saying, what do you need? Who can we partner with? And we have these things that could plug in and really help with that. Okay. So that is, the next slide is, is who do you connect with? Who, who do we have on the ground and who does this work? So what, what I'm proposing is that we used to have an extension educator that worked with the county meetings and other groups across the county. The county budget was done with the extension educator and actually it always came through me and I helped do that. And then it goes through the director according to state law. But the reality is, is, so that's there. And then the school district, community groups, Hillary covers that. And then we all work together to work with the public generally and where's needed. What we're pose, proposing is that we will now have the extension county coordinator working with you all, coming in and presenting and our other staff come in with what exciting things they have and any other groups. The county budget will be done by that coordinator and myself. So that won't change very much. In fact, I've got a draft started, Josh. So wherever he is, so we're, we're going to keep working on that. The school district and community groups, Hillary will be the connector with that. But she will also have the extension county coordinator that'll be bouncing in and, and in person in many of these meetings so that she won't be alone trying to cover so much. Plus, we will be looking at other things. What I'm proposing is that we take some of the funds and we bolster up the staffing. And one of that is Dayton, a part-time person to support programming in that area. And I think that just is an easier way to be more efficient in, in covering those areas. I also need a part-time person for Story County. So there's a chance that that may be the one and same person since those two communities are so close to each other. But that's, that's, that's what I would like to propose to ensure that Dayton as a growing community gets the services and then we still have enough staff to cover all of the other communities and that will be done in partnership like we, we should always be working. And that is my presentation. I know I ran through a lot, couldn't, I'm sorry, but I know I have a short time and I'm probably pushing you over. So, yeah.
Commissioner Constance, yes, Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, thank you very much. I was a four H member throughout my entire childhood, showed cattle, sheep. We, our family proudly had the wildest sheep at the fair because we probably didn't work with them enough. Um, but, but very, you touch on a lot of points that I totally agree with. And I do believe leaders are the key. That just keeps kids and, and tell them kids recruit other kids because they're having such a good time. This extension coordinator, I tried to follow as close as I could and my fellow board members will probably agree that I'm probably the slowest one up there. So just, so you're revamping that, how that looks. And so like your extension coordinator could be, if there was umbrella, you mentioned the school district, what the school district might be the egg program, the F F A, some of those other, the home act culinary. The, including the Boys and Girls Club. I could see the healthy communities with their greenhouse efforts as a partner with your extension agent helping out with that. Um, etc. So that's exciting that we're not, you're kind of trying to change and refigure to make it more successful. Also, and you, you mentioned working with the school district. Where are you at with, with, with those folks? Have you started ground roots with those?
Hillary's been working with the school district all along, you know, and, and you know, that, that relationship is always there as well as at the school ground level. So there's multiple layers of relationships and, and like our SNAP Ed program worked with the nutrition.
Eating places, all of them.
So, so I mean, it's, it's a lot of things to cut. You guys know, you're on all of these boards and things. So, you know, trying to cover agriculture, youth, family, all of those types of things. So that's why putting more time towards those connections in the community is what we're looking for out of this change. And, and just to go to your point of we will be adding a livestock specialist and an agriculture advisor into the Fallon office and creating a hub of support that will go beyond. So we won't be losing, we'll be having somebody that spends all of their time supporting that. So people will be able to go for those specific areas.
Right on. And then I also heard you say something about bureaucracy with feeding kids. Is that, what was it bureaucracy? I was just going to say, go figure if there's. I was just going to say, go figure if there's bureaucracy.
It probably stood out to me. I don't know if I should have said that.
Well, I agree with you.
Yeah.
So if I heard you right, I totally agree. There's too much bureaucracy. Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair Holly. Thank you very much. You know, I I am impressed by the work you guys do with the small staff that you do have. And I definitely agree with the part-time person in Dayton because Dayton is going to continue to grow. It's not going to stop and we don't want it to stop, quite frankly. Um, and I really appreciate the work you do with our youth. You know, because the more positive interactions that we have with youth at at this age, the less these guys are going to have to interact when they get older. And so really appreciate that. Thank you.
I just appreciate all that you do. A lot of our communities have very little for our kids to to do and be engaged in and to have something available that also teaches them useful life skills is very helpful. And I appreciate the fact that when things weren't working the way they should, that you thought outside the box and decided to take a new approach.
Commissioner Keller.
Nice to talk last because I already said it all. Thank you for coming in and uh, really appreciate it. Uh, anything we can do for our youth is just real important for our community. So thank you.
Great, thank you.
Not quite last.
Not quite last.
Yeah, thank you for your presentation, uh, what I consider be a very important program and programs for the county. And uh, taking the time to come and tell us what's going on and what you plan on doing in the future. So thank you very much, all of you. Very helpful for our communities.
Great, thank you. And we will be back to talking more. Um, so thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we are well past nine fifteen, not too much past. Uh, for presentation only update from the Bureau of Land Management on current activities. Siri, you're up.
All right. Hi, uh, my name's John Palma. I'm uh, the acting field manager for Sierra Front Field Office uh, with the BLM. So just here to give you a little bit of updates on some of the activities that we have going on in Lyon County. Uh, so the first one I got on here is a Anaconda Mine uh, Site Disposal. So uh, in September, uh, BLM did grant approval through a notification receipt for Atlantic Bridge Field to decommission the former wastewater treatment plant and construct a new one. Um, after construction is complete, Atlantic Bridge Field uh, will submit an application for the right of way on the facility and have the facility assigned to Weed Heights is the plan there. Uh, we're also currently working through the appraisal process while also drafting the environmental assessment. Uh, and then uh, once that's done, that environmental assessment will be released for public comment. So that's kind of where we're at on is Anaconda. Uh, Bureau Fiber Optic Line, which is a line that runs from Vegas there to Reno, which will pass through Lyon County in some parts. Um, so with that one, the uh, preliminary environmental assessment did close on January tenth. And so right now we're or the contractor is going through all the public comments and kind of incorporating some of those into that environmental assessment. So right now, uh, once that final EA is released, uh, expect construction is anticipated somewhere in this early twenty twenty-four timeframe. Um, El Dorado Dam, which is over there uh, above Dayton. Uh, we are in the process of finalizing an environmental assessment for the decommissioning of that dam. Uh, I'm sure uh, this has been talked about before, but that's uh, been in that dam, we've been there since nineteen seventy-two. And so it's been deemed by the uh, the state safety uh, dam off, the state state safety dam officer that uh, it is no longer safe uh, to have there. Uh, it's been deteriorating over the years. And so once this EA is done, we'll be looking to get that uh, dam decommissioned. Um, so we do anticipate that the uh, the EA finally EA Fonzie and decision record will be issued sometime in February is what we're looking at. So that should be working there. Um, Minister Road Project, which has been on the agenda before. So that actually was completed and the grant authorized. So that was the uh, uh, a trail right away for the Walker River State Recreation Area, the Pitchfork Unit. So that has been authorized. So that should be good to go for non-motorized access and glad to have that done. Um, Wabaska Geothermal Project. Um, that one's been around for a little while and I know uh, right now we are just waiting on uh, some review of some special status species that came out in November. But once that's done, uh, we will have uh, a decision record and Fonzie out with that EA as well. That one's moving along. Uh, and then as far as off-highway OHV special recreation permits in Lyon County, we've had five applications since November. Uh, so we've had three uh, applications for OHV race events. Uh, one application for an OHV tour and then one application for a horse endurance event as well. So that's coming up on the plate over the next year. Um, there's a bit of solar projects in in Lyon County. Uh, so I've got a few to update on that. So the Parker Butte uh, solar project, that uh, variance meeting for the public and and with cooperating agencies happened on January ninth and eleventh. And so uh, with that, we'll be moving into uh, determining uh, well, we'll be taking all the comments uh, incorporated into the variance package and then making a decision, well, a decision will be passed on to our state director and then our our director operations for whether or not to grant that variance. So and then if it's granted, then we'll move into uh, the NEPA process for that project. Um, Mason Valley and Pine Net Solar. Um, these are, these are here as well. Uh, haven't done the uh, so this is just a proposal right now. We still need to do all the variants and all that. So estimated construction would be, they're looking at twenty twenty-eight, twenty twenty-nine out uh, in the future. So uh, that was just coming onto our plate right now. Um, Lever Solar, which uh, probably familiar with as well. Uh, that federal register notice is scheduled to be published uh, here uh, tomorrow, actually for uh, the draft EIS. So that will begin, so tomorrow when that comes out, that'll begin the forty-five day comment period uh, for that EIS. Um, and then a long road development company. Uh, so that's uh, an EIS north of Urington. Uh, that application, so this is actually more commonly referred to as Artemisia. Uh, so the Artemisia Solar, uh, that one, we have variance meetings for the cooperators and public set for uh, January thirtieth and February first. So you should have got uh, some kind of communication on that, those meetings. Um, some reality updates. So the Hodges Transportation, uh, they're just uh, still in process of doing baseline surveys. Uh, and that's for the roads that they've been using since the fifties. So no change to their routes, just uh, redoing uh, the NEPA for all that. Um, we're continuing to work with firmly on the phase one lands bills. So that would be parcels one, three, four, five, six and seven and eight. Um, and then for phase two, I authorize the the fieldwork authorization and then the uh, the cadastro of work that needs to be done. So uh, there's some work that's definitely going to be done over the next year, uh, getting that done. Those uh, surveys completed. Um, there's the Great Basin Gas Transmission Company EIS. So that uh, uh, is some amendments to current authorizations to process. Uh, once complete, uh, we're currently kind of reviewing the NEPA right now. And then uh, the Highway fifty water pipeline, uh, that NEPA is scheduled to start here around the second quarter of twenty-four. So in the next four, four months or so. Uh, and then as far as fuels projects, uh, in Lyon County, so Upper Colony, which is over by Smith Valley. Uh, we currently have about a little over a thousand acres of mowing that's starting and and continuing right now in progress. And then we've also completed two hundred and seventy acres of mastication, hand thing and pile construction up along Sunrise Pass. And then that that work doesn't just stop in Lyon County, it goes over in Douglas County. I can connect to some projects we have over in Douglas County as well. And then that's all the updates I've had right now. Uh, earlier.
Commissioner, questions? Comments? Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. Thank you for for being here and providing the the updates. I really appreciate him. Like to see some of your your fellow agency show up once in a while. The only question I have, that I bring this up every time, is where are we at as far as horse population in Lyon County as opposed to AML?
I don't know that off the top of my head, so I will get back. So uh, the horse population in Lyon County compared to AM. Okay.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
He took the words right out of my mouth, Commissioner Henderson.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I want to know that the El Dorado Dam, will there be any repercussions from decommissioning that?
Uh, yes, so right now, uh, you know, we'll have that EA coming out. Uh, but from what I know, uh, we've been full wet state in here that we needed to get that done. So that doesn't cause problems down the road. So as far as I know, caused less problems to remove it.
Okay.
Commissioner Keller.
But doesn't that, aren't we using that as a uh, uh, part of our flood control right now? Are we? I'm just curious about it. Ben.
And by release, re- removing that dam, do we look at the um, we're talking about water storage throughout the year. Uh, one last area to store water. You know, that a lot of times we're talking about, it just goes down the river. This goes down and we don't have any storage. Is that going to reduce? Are we planning on having some other type of storage?
Yeah, so as far, I guess I'd have to look more into it, but as far as I know, that's not necessarily a storage facility that's necessarily used right now.
Just control.
Yes.
Okay.
More of a retention pond.
Yeah, or retention pond.
Is it more of a retention pond then?
Uh, right now, I mean, it's just been, it's not really been maintained and the spillway doesn't even really close all the way. So the water just goes through.
Uh, Commissioner Keller.
So it was just from the mining operation, that was it?
Uh, so I guess from what it was from, uh, looked like some, I don't know exactly who the private entities were, but back in seventies, some private entities got together and wanted it built uh, for water up there. I would have to look into that to see if that was the reason why.
Thank you.
Uh, on fuels over in the Upper Colony area, I'd heard something about a problem that we're, we don't quite have enough masticators uh, running short or they're breaking down or is BLM doing all right with uh, equipment?
Uh, yeah, that one's a contract. So that would be the contractor. And so they've got a timeframe that they need to get it done. And as long as, would we just make sure that they meet that timeframe?
Okay, so it's contractor should be fine. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anything further? Any public comment? None, then we will uh, let you go. Appreciate.
You very much.
Appreciate the information. Item seven, presentation of awards and a recognition of accomplishments. Uh, do we have any? Nobody's jumping up. No, it's anything there for item seven. We'll go to item eight, Commissioner and County Manager Reports. Uh, let's start with Commissioner Jacobson today.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, attended the NACO foundational public health services meeting. Um, very impressed, of course, with Ms. Allison, uh, but also Shayla Holmes and her crew, just so very knowledgeable and uh, really kind of help lead the, I thought luckily, I think they worked it so that one of Shayla's crew was in every group so that not only did we stay focused, we were semi-educated when we presented out. So good job on the numbering system there. Um, meeting with uh, met with Mr. Kirkley and some other JPO officers and and um, experts, I guess, if you will, are people that have implemented the harbor model. Um, as regarding the JPO, while nothing's coming forth yet, I don't know if something will end up coming our way or not. Um, but it sounds like that we'll probably need some grant funding before it can get off the ground here in Lyon County. It sounds like it might be spending. Uh, and then uh, meeting with Nevada Works and sounds like they have a couple pots of money to disperse uh, for workforce development. I invited them to come visit, uh, uh, share information here at a county commission meeting, but I think their timeline is tight. So uh, I don't know if we'll get a presentation from Nevada Works in on that pot of workforce development money. But um, it might be something the county wants to look into and applying for, but it is, it is a tight window right now, but maybe in the years to come, just plant the seed. That's all I have, Chairman Hockaday.
Thank you, Commissioner Keller.
I attended the Lyon County Planning Commission and the Carson River Water Sub Conservancy meeting last night. I also attended uh, for USDA and Department of Energy listening sessions on the clean energy uh, citing challenges in rural communities. Each one of those listening sessions were geared toward a specific stakeholder group. The first one was through, was for uh, government permitting and uh, policy representatives in the state, local and county levels. Second one was for agricultural producers. The third one was for stakeholders and members of the public. And finally, the fourth one was for rural stakeholders and actually the clean energy developers. Uh, I felt it was important to show up to those meetings because uh, there's an historic amount of money going from the federal government throughout our counties, throughout our states, from the uh, what's it called? The Inflationary Reduction Act, and they also are some from the Jobs Act. There's a record number of projects that are being proposed and many, and we just heard of some of them. Uh, they're under construction or they're being considered, especially on BLM and ag land. That's what's most important to us. Um, they say it's for uh, reduction for infla- in- inflationary reduction, but actually it's just a big push for the green energy uh, from this administration. We're going to end up with some bad actors because it's a money grab. So we've got to be careful of what the contractors are doing out there. Uh, we had, we've listened to the people, the the people, one size doesn't fit all. So I was listening to people from uh, farmers in woodland areas up in upper state New York, uh, rice farmers down in the Mississippi Delta, uh, corn, corn uh, farmers up there in the Midwest. A lot of the cities down in Arizona trying to figure out what they're doing. And they're going to come up with policies that are so broad that they're not going to really affect us. We're going to be caught in a trap. I think we have to do a little bit more. So we're doing, working on a best practice solution with NACO of the plans and Natural Resources Committee and trying to move something forward. So at least we're not getting ran over by all these projects. They're, they're already applying to do the projects. We have to be brought up to board. Uh, I thought I'd share that with you since I asked for uh, to be brought up with at least a summary from all our boards. And I was just letting you guys know what we're up against and what I'm doing right now. And I also would like that podium back over here. Thank you.
Moved, it's electric.
Electric, you're right. We're sitting on a podium.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I attended the uh, National Association of Counties Public Land Steering Committee. And what I have of interest on that, we had a presentation from the Federal Forest Resources Coalition, coalition talking about a proposed uh, old growth rule by the US Forest Service. So we can continue to monitor that. I also attended the Campo meeting. And there really wasn't anything that affected Lyon County on that this year. I zoomed into the Planning Commission meeting as well. And uh, that's really all I had to report this this month. Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, I attended the Silver Springs Advisory Board Meeting, the Planning Commission Meeting. Last night I attended the Carson Water Sub Conservancy District Meeting and they did give um, a report on where we are with water this year. And so far, we're at fifty-seven percent of where we should be right now, but they're not too alarmed because we have so much winter ahead of us. So and I too, um, like uh, Commissioner Keller, I listened in to some of those listening sessions and the information is useful. And I agree that we really need to focus on how we're going to address that sooner than later.
Hey, thank you. I attended the Walker River Region District Meeting. Um, interesting comment from the weather people from Reno. Interesting comment from the weather people from Reno that, um. If it, if it doesn't snow a lot more, our snowpack will be impacted. I'm thinking, well, really? No, if we didn't get more snow, we wouldn't have snowpack, um. Uh, but that's the weather people, you know, it may or may not rain, may or may not be cold. Uh, the other meeting was the, uh, Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting, kind of discussed some of the hazard mitigation. Also attended the Mason Valley and Smith Valley Conservation District Joint Dinner Meeting, uh, which we do once a year. Normally, there's two meetings every month, but, uh, once a year we do get together and, and have kind of an enjoyable evening and minimal business. Uh, thank you to Taylor Allison for her presentation on the Hazard Mitigation Plan. It was short and very concise, so appreciated that. Other than that, we'll go on to the County Manager.
Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. Um, so I've been busy with a number of issues, uh, we're working on some internal things. Um, we have the, uh, we had the kickoff meeting last week for the Health District Study. And so that's something that, that we'll be working on, um, moving forward. So that was good. Um, last week, we did have a, uh, snow day here at the county. We had to close the county offices, uh, because of. Pretty large amount of snow that was kind of unexpected. We were expecting two to four inches and. I think we got anywhere from twelve to seventeen inches, depending on where you were at the county. So, um, that's not something that, uh, we do every time it snows by any means, but, um, this time we had to. We, we needed a little extra time to get caught up, get all the sidewalks and stuff, uh, all the county facilities cleared, cleared up and. Get the roads cleared up. I really want to, um, express my gratitude and appreciation for the. Roads Department, the Facilities Department, and all of our public safety staff that did have to work that day. They weren't able to have that day off, so, um, but I really appreciate it. Um, they, they were able to get us all cleared up and, and back to work the next day, so. Really appreciate that, um. So, yeah, just working on a, a bunch of stuff. Could answer any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the call also in the morning, uh, we, we had that discussion about the snow, um. Uh, I didn't really think much about it till I walked out, looked in the backyard and saw twelve to thirteen inches on the picnic table. Said, wow, it did snow a lot. So we were really inundated and, uh, I definitely believe it was a, it was a good idea not to have everybody trying to drive in and. In the bad road conditions. All right, then, we're gonna go on to item number nine, elected official reports. The sheriff coming up. And this will be presentation only, Lyon County Sheriff's Office twenty twenty-three annual report.
Uh, good morning, Lyon County Sheriff Brad Boe for the record. Uh, before I start the report, I just want to add a few notes, uh. During the, uh, the twenty-two campaign, when presented a lot of these plans, uh, one of the critiques was that the Board of County Commissioners, the, uh, Comptroller. County Manager wanted to be on board with those and. And I just wanted to give thanks to you guys as, uh, you supported the Lyon County Sheriff's Office through it, through every step that, uh. Have rarely, if, if ever told me no, so I really appreciate that and, uh, just want to give you guys my thanks, so. Um. It's a fifty-two page document, not gonna go through every page, I promise, um. I did want to highlight on, on page two, the change in our mission statement. Uh, Lyon County Sheriff's Office is committed to aggressively and professionally enforcing the law. And protecting our communities against those who choose a life of crime over our quality of life. Uh, we had a pretty fluffy, uh, mission statement before that, and, uh. The command staff and I decided that, uh, we wanted a very direct, uh, mission statement that, uh. Fit the Lyon County Sheriff's Office and our new mission, so, uh, we changed it to that. Um. On page four. Just a part of my message that I wanted to read in, uh. Uh, every division and department of Lyon County Sheriff's Office plays a pivotal role in serving our communities. And as you will see in the statistics in the following report, I've asked a lot of every member of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, and, uh, they have delivered. Uh, and that includes sworn and non-s sworn staff, um. We inherited a, uh, pretty neglected sheriff's office, and, uh, it was a lot of work, not only for our sworn staff to recover, but, uh, for our non, non-s sworn staff as well. Next few pages are a litany of, uh, new programs that we instituted, uh, over twenty twenty-three and, uh. Just scroll through those, it's. You know, part of, part of leadership says that you don't, uh. Start an abundance of new programs in one year, and, uh, we kind of bucked that, uh, trying to start a lot of programs. And, uh, they're, they're running fairly well and, uh, doing pretty successful, so. Page, page twelve. Uh, something I spoke of, uh, many times in the commissioners' meetings, uh, nothing in this report should really be a surprise, and so I've reported on this stuff throughout the year. And that's part of, uh, being community involved and sharing the information throughout the community, so. Uh, I've said in other meetings, when I've, uh, presented this, that none of this should be a surprise, as I continue to report on this data. Uh, we restructured the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, uh, right away. Um, again, my meeting, January third of last year, if I was sworn in with County Manager and, and, uh. Mr. Foley, uh, fully on board with the restructure plan. Um, provided a lot of guidance, and we really do appreciate that. Commissioners approved the restructure plan. And then, and again, I think it set us in the, the right direction and, and, uh, really went well to the changes of the Sheriff's Office. Uh, we went from a sheriff, an undersheriff, patrol captain, a jail captain, captain, and administrative captain. Uh, to our current command structure. Uh, basically, we, we took everybody out of the hallway here and said, move them throughout the county. Uh, we now have a chief deputy instead of an undersheriff, he's based in Fernley. Our, uh, western commander is based in Dayton, central commander is based in Silver Springs, and our southern commander is based in, in Hurington, uh. He also oversees the jail, the patrol division there. Um, without the command staff as well, uh, keeping me in check and being the voice of reason a lot of times. Lyon County Sheriff's Office would not run nearly as smooth as it does, so appreciate the, the hard work that these guys have put in. Um, used to be a culture in the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, that the further you went up the chain, the less work you did. And that's part of the culture that we changed, uh, the further you got the chain, now the more work. You're expected to do it, and, uh, put a lot on the, the command staff, put a lot on the, uh, lieutenants and sergeants, and they've really delivered. Page fourteen, we're establishing a twenty-four hour supervision in the jail. Uh, with supervision, uh, that's what I mean by that, is our, where we will now have four jail sergeants. Uh, one of our sergeants that was in investigations had put it in his resignation letter for January twenty-eighth. Uh, that position was going to be transferred to the jail to keep four sergeants on, so we have a shift supervisor on at all times, plus lieutenant. Um, that position is not going away in investigations. I will be replaced by a deputy who will be a detective. Sixteen, our staffing levels, at the time of this report, we're operating at ninety-nine percent. Um, there's an asterisk on this, fourteen, at least fourteen of these positions need to complete field training and/or the academy. But the restructure plan. Put, uh, ten deputies in the central command area, which is Silver Springs. Put twenty deputies in the northern command, which is Fernley. Sixteen in the western command, which is Dayton, and, uh, ten in the southern command on patrol, which is, which is down here in Mason Valley, Smith Valley, um. And twenty in the jail. Major events, we can just browse through. Sure everybody remembers the flooding and the rock slide, the plane crash, uh. Everything that was out of the, out of our control, uh, for that first year, or first part of the year. Like to skip to page thirty-two. Big focus of the restructure plan was to reduce the response times of the Lyon County Sheriff's Office, and we took office, the response times were. Were unacceptable. Just gonna go through these real quick. Fernley, our priority call, one calls. Uh, twenty twenty-two, we're twenty-six minutes, and I'm just gonna round, like I said, the seconds, but. Twenty-six minutes in twenty twenty-three reduced us to ten minutes. Priority two went from thirty-six minutes to twelve. Priority three went from forty-two minutes to seventeen. Silver Springs, priority one call, response time went from twenty-six minutes to thirteen. Priority two went from thirty-seven minutes to fifteen. Our priority three went from one hour and two minutes down to twenty minutes. On Dayton, our priority one calls were reduced from thirty-five minutes to eight minutes. Priority two is reduced from twenty-eight minutes to thirteen. Priority three was reduced from thirty-seven to sixteen. The Walker River, uh, priority one was reduced from twenty-nine minutes to nine. Priority two is reduced from twenty-five minutes to sixteen, and priority three was reduced from thirty-five minutes to twenty-two. Then on the next page, our traffic stop numbers. Uh, we saw a large increase in certain areas of the county and our traffic stop numbers as well. Uh, countywide is a fifty-two percent increase, but if you look at certain areas, uh, for instance, the Dayton Patrol Zone. Had a one hundred and five percent increase in traffic stops. Uh, the previous, uh, thought process was that Highway fifty was a state police or NHP problem. Um, with our community members dying on Highway fifty, my thought process, my belief is that, uh, Highway fifty is a Lyon County Sheriff's Office problem. Uh, so you can see in Dayton, our traffic stops increased by a hundred and five percent. On Silver Springs, uh, we increased by a hundred and six percent. Uh, and that's relevant to adding the Silver Springs Squad. Back to the fold, so to speak. Next page on the OTS grants. See a significant increase from twenty twenty-two as well. Uh, total number of stops went up over a hundred percent. Um. I just real quick, the OTS grant is a state-funded grant that provides our deputies', uh, overtime expenditure. They pay for our overtime. To do nothing but conduct traffic stops and traffic-related issue complaints, so, uh, Sergeant Julie Redman runs this program. Um, gave a lot more warnings, gave nearly six hundred more warnings, twenty twenty-three, went from, up from two hundred and eighty-one to eight hundred and five. Anytime you have a, uh, a thousand, uh, thousand more traffic stops, obviously those warnings are gonna go up. We issued four hundred more sites. We arrested four times the DUIs. In twenty twenty-two, we arrested eleven DUIs with this program. Twenty twenty-three, we arrested forty-five. Actually wrote less speeding tickets, four hundred and forty-one down to four hundred and four. Maybe those were the DUIs, I don't know. Numbers seem important, but, uh, and the rest are just basic violations. Um, go to the next page, please. New program we instituted, um, one of the things that, uh, one of the plans I had issued during my campaign was. That the Lyon County Sheriff's Office would be running saturation patrols. We were told they were impossible, uh, based on the statistics and the outcome that we've had on these saturation controls are clearly not. Um, but there's a caveat to that, is our numbers fill up and there's less, uh, money available for our. Salaries and our overtime. We're gonna see, we're gonna have to reorganize those and restructure those to something different, instead of putting, uh, fifteen cops in an area for an entire shift on overtime. We're gonna have to look at, uh, different ways to accomplish these goals. And the statistics are up there, um, the first one we ever did in Fernley was kind of our test, uh, test case, and I'd, uh. Announced this one, that we're going to do this, and, uh, I told the board about it, I told the public that he will be in Fernley for the saturation patrol. We still ended up with one hundred and sixty-three total law enforcement contacts in that shift. Uh, ten arrests, and out of those hundred and sixty-three, one hundred and one were traffic stops. In Dayton, in March last year, we had a hundred and fifty-three total law enforcement contacts with eleven arrests, hundred and forty-five total traffic stops. In Silver Springs, uh, we had seventy-four total traffic stops, nine arrests, and eighty-four, I'm sorry, eighty-three law enforcement contacts. We went back to Fernley, and, uh, the reason why we went back to Fernley on this one is we started to see an increase in fentanyl overdosees. And, uh, crimes being committed, more street crimes, and we wanted to saturate the area. We had sixty-five total traffic stops, eighty-four law enforcement contacts, and four subjects were arrested. And I can specifically remember on, on, uh, the saturation patrol and doing walkers in the casino. Our guys reporting back that, uh, everyone in the casino was talking about their return from the saturation patrol. And a lot of people went home early that night, so bad for business for the casino, good for us, uh, less calls for service, but, uh. Mason Valley in October, did one seventy-nine total traffic stops, but our law enforcement contacts, and we arrested three subjects. Uh, the statistics for our investigations division are interesting, uh. Go to the last page of that. One of the, the new programs we put in place, uh, was our coroner. Uh, Lyon County Sheriff's Office, every deputy is a coroner, uh, as the sheriff and chief coroner. But we've never had a full-time dedicated deputy to the coroner division. And, uh, what that has done for us is it has freed up a lot of time for our deputies to get back on, on streets and do, uh, police duties. Instead of death investigations, so she has done an excellent job. Uh, you've seen her here, she was awarded a coroner partner in the year from the Nevada Donor Life. Uh, she's actually next on the investigations list to be promoted. When that detective that's resigning leaves, she's going to have to do dual duties for a while, but she will be our next, uh, detective as well. Uh, that has freed up a lot of time for the deputies, follow-ups with funeral homes, the medical examiner's office. A family, the public administrator, all that adds up, and when a deputy's in the office doing that, they're not on the street and force them along. So it's been a successful program, and, uh, we're proud of her and the hard work she's done. Dispatch. So this is law enforcement calls only, um. And that's my mistake, I left out the fire calls for dispatch. But in twenty twenty-two, Lyon County Sheriff's Office Law Enforcement Calls for Service were thirty-four thousand ninety-two. In twenty twenty-three, there were thirty-six thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight. Uh, do the math, it's a lot every day, so, uh, if you add the fire calls for service in that, there's over fifty thousand calls for service. In Lyon County through the dispatch center last year. And, uh, they're extremely low staff, but they're all working hard, and we appreciate their hard work and, uh, dedication to their assignment. Uh, calls for service, law enforcement by patrol area. Uh, Fernley had over thirteen thousand calls for service, Dayton had over twelve thousand calls for service. Silver Springs had over six thousand, Mason Valley had four thousand. One of the reasons for the restructure plan, um, and now that we have the data to kind of show what I was talking about. Is the Fernley area was solely responsible for Silver Springs, so if you add those two numbers together. Uh, the Fernley deputies were responsible for almost twenty thousand calls for service in twenty twenty-two. That's why our response times, um, one of the reasons why our response times are so high is that, uh. Silver Springs was creating a law enforcement vacuum that was sucking everything into it. Uh, not only do you have to drive to Silver Springs, but you have to drive back to your patrol area, so adding the Silver Springs Squad there. Has helped tremendously. Uh, you, you see a breakdown throughout the pages on what types of calls for service. That we receive over the year. I am definitely not going to read through that list, it's about a hundred of them, so. Um, go to page forty-six, highlights our detention division. Yeah, I sat through annual reports and listened to annual reports by the Sheriff's Office, and, uh, so some of the information was. So much fluff, and I didn't want to do that, I want to be direct and just tell you the pertinent information. Um, the Sheriff's Office, we don't care how many rolls of toilet paper we hand out, we hand out a lot, and you're not gonna get that kind of report from us, but. What you will see on page forty-seven is that the Lyon County Sheriff's Office arrests went up by nearly two hundred last year that we booked into our jail. Uh, one thousand three hundred and forty-three arrests compared to one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight. If you look at the other agencies, almost all of them show a decrease in arrests. Uh, whether that's manpower issues, thought process, mission, uh, we're not sure, we can't quantify that, but. The Lyon County Sheriff's Office, uh, mission and direction is that, uh, we're going to be aggressive. And arrest people, and they need to be arrested, and, uh, it shows in our number. Um, average daily population. In twenty twenty-two, uh, was sixty-eight inmates, and in twenty twenty-three, that number was increased to ninety-one. And that's due to a, uh, mission change and, uh, a direction change on aggressive law enforcement tactics. Um. And the rest is, is our civil processes. See, the numbers are about the same, um. One thing that wasn't being done in twenty twenty-two is our neighbors' reporting, uh, that's the reporting to the federal government on our crime statistics. Uh, that got shut off in May of twenty-twenty-two, uh, during the campaign. Um, but in twenty-twenty-three, we reported, uh, probably more numbers than that because the twenty-twenty-two had to be caught up. So our data wasn't there available at the time, but we reported three thousand sixty-seven, uh, cases deniers and our records division processed, uh, five thousand two hundred and forty-eight reports. Um, why that number is down is we took the mandated reports away from dispatch. So in twenty-twenty-two, depending on what type of call you, you went to, um, you were automatically generated a case number. And what that was doing was that was bogging our deputies down, even typing, uh, no case number needed at this time. And no case and we're sending it to a supervisor for approval, sending it to another supervisor for approval, going to the records division to process. So we took that away. We put the accountability on our deputies. If you're supposed to take a report and you don't, uh, we'll hold you accountable. And so far, uh, that program's worked really well. It's actually reduced the number of reports that we've taken, made it more efficient. Our CCW issuances, excuse me, are about the same. Uh, next page is our mobile outreach safety team. A deputy Westbrook, uh, came to us from, he was the chief of police for a tribal agency. And, uh, he lateral transferred over. We put out the most position. Uh, nobody is really interested in the most position except for Deputy Westbrook. So he's actually doing a fantastic job. He loves his job. Uh, everything we hear from most is they're glad to have him. Twenty-twenty-three, we responded to four hundred and seventy-one most referrals. And out of those four hundred and seventy-one most referrals, three hundred and five of them are unduplicated, meaning it's not the same person. Uh, next page is our VIPs. Uh, our volunteers, I can't say enough about, there were so many man-hours, uh, for the Lyon County Sheriff's Office at very little cost to the sheriff's office, uh, replacing duties that a deputy would have to do. Uh, mostly Vinc checks and civil services are part of our, our duties. And the deputies would have to do them if the VIPs weren't filling in. They do an awesome job and, uh, they ask for a few things, but they're, uh, they're pretty good guys and girls and, uh, they do a great job for us. The search and rescue teams and the report. Uh, the only stats I was given before this report was, uh, needed to be finished was how many volunteer hours they had. And, uh, those hours are up three hundred from last year. At the, uh, search and rescue, at dinner last week, Patty said that, uh, she had the full breakdowns for me. It's already completed the report, but, uh, I'll be happy to share those and, uh, I will probably share those, um, as a message of the week and get that out to the public. I feel it's relevant. They do an awesome job for us. And again, they're a volunteer group that, uh, really do a great job and, and, uh, save the sheriff's office a lot of time. Uh, that's the sheriff's office in a nutshell. I said, I, I don't know if there's any surprises that can report this stuff throughout the year. And, uh, again, I appreciate all the support in twenty-twenty-three that we have from the, uh, board of commissioners, Mr. Foley, Mr. Haskins, and really all the, uh, all the county staff have been extremely supportive of the sheriff's office. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, sure appreciate the report. Um, maybe I missed it, SRO data.
So we had put out the SRO data and, uh, and other things. I didn't make the report this year. It's one of our over looks, but, uh, you're doing a great job. Our, uh, our school crimes are down.
And, and, um, um, it, it is too bad that we don't have that data because I know the fights are down considerably and I can't speak for other areas, but I can for Fernley High School. Um, and, uh, the drug alcohol, um, just it's amazing, this, that restorative justice, whatever that was, phonies, whatever. Or make it hurt in their pocketbook and man, golly, you hold them accountable with some jingle and, and things happen. Um, and then of course, just the presence and that may be why the, the, uh, tickets were down too is because, uh, police presence. So good job, sheriff, and, uh, congratulate all your crew.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, uh, going off of what, uh, Commissioner Jacobson had to say, I'd like to know if you have any stats or anything of, uh, how your programs are working as far as, uh, restructuring and everything. Are the locals getting better? Compared to the people from out of town doing criminal activity? In other words, are your programs working like through the school and stuff to where there's more respect for law and order locally? I understand we've still got problems, but is it traveling in or how's that working? And I'd like to see that.
Yeah, and I can answer somewhat to that. I would say that the, uh, the sentiment for the Lyon County Sheriff's Office has been great with the community. Uh, our deputies report that, you know, they go out to lunch and someone buys their lunch without them knowing it. Someone buys their coffee. Uh, people are coming up to them and saying thank you. And guys that have worked here for fifteen years are saying that that's never happened to them once in their career. So we, we do see a change, uh, with the community outlook. And as, as far as our program's working, uh, we post our mug shots every week. And you'll, you'll see familiar faces. Um, and so we're, we're continually arresting the, the same group of people, but, uh, so I want to say that it's necessarily the people coming in from out of town. We seem to get more retirees from out of town than anything else that we've met along the way. And, uh, they seem to become targets more than become our criminal population. So, uh, that, that's my assessment. How to quantify that? I'm not sure. That's just me getting out to the community and talking with people and, and from what my, uh, my family staff has seen as well.
And I did wanna, uh, say your response times are great and everything else. It's gonna be a little harder next year to improve on that, but they're, they're great now. Yep.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Cherry. Yeah, thanks for the report. A lot of good information. Yeah, I, um, I, I notice the difference in the, the visibility of, of the sheriff's department. I certainly appreciate that. And I want to commend you for all the stuff that you do with youth. You know, I've said numerous times, you know, the more positive interactions you have now, the less negative interactions you're gonna have when they grow up. So I certainly appreciate all your efforts on, on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Yes, um, I believe that good, effective law enforcement enhances, um, our attractiveness for economic development. So I really appreciate what you've done. And I especially appreciate the zero tolerance policies you've instituted in the school district.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you for the update and, uh, I think most of the commissioners have made excellent comments about your programs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, let's see if we can get through and then we'll take a little break after eleven. Uh, appointed official reports. Any appointed official reports?
Uh, Louis Cariola, Community Development Director. Good morning, commissioners. Uh, just a couple of quick updates, uh, in, in the planning division. We are still short of a senior planner. Uh, but I did want to commend staff for still maintaining our review timelines and, uh, producing a quality product. The reason I came up actually today is to discuss some complaints we got, uh, regarding Waste Management's response based on last week's, uh, storm event. So I did speak to, uh, the representative of Waste Management. And as you recall, the new contract starts March one. I did express some of the dissatisfaction, some of our residents, uh, conveyed to us, uh, regarding the response based on the snow and some bad customer service, uh, comments that they received when they tried to call in. The, the plan for the new implementation, uh, will include a couple, uh, items that I believe were supposed to be executed as part of the previous contract. Um, but now Waste Management recognizes needs to be, uh, further, um, sort of investigated because I don't believe the service has been properly provided and certainly implemented with the new contract. So there will be the establishment of customer service lines for both North and South Lyon County. Property owners who provide contact information, that would be phone number or email. If they're not going to receive service, Waste Management will contact them directly. I did find out that only about half of the customers, according to Waste Management, uh, do provide that information. So sometimes there's sort of a communication breakdown by the customers' own doing. Additionally, the event of snow is not considered non-service, provided Waste Management is able to follow through and pick up on the next scheduled day at no additional charge. Uh, so there will be a public information campaign that I'm going to ask if they stress some of these details so that the public recognizes how the contract works and how service is supposed to be provided.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, so the next scheduled day or the next day pickup? I guess, so are, are these folks gonna wait the, till the following week? Is that what you said?
Yes, sir. So I, and, and thanks for bringing that up because I didn't miss that point. I intended to, to expand.
Well, you see, you did. I'll just clarify.
Yeah, no, they, so the next day is already scheduled for somewhere else. I think, um, the, the details are that the trucks that go to one community do not then just move to another community because of weather. They're kind of just grounded in that community. So no, the next day has its own scheduled pickups. It's would be the following week, uh, with no additional charge for two weeks pickup. That, that's the standard procedure, at least per the contract. And I, and I don't mean to get too uptupped here for the details, but yeah, I mean, you're right. No extra charge for extra cans and bags. I, I, I didn't mean to derail our meeting here. We just hear a number of complaints. Um, and I did follow up because I wanted to make sure we had a response if you've heard complaints also.
You know, very appropriate report. Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, uh, thank you, Mr. Cherry. Thank you very much actually for bringing this forward. I hope, you know, the, any, anytime we have that incident where there's a lot of public complaints about Waste Management in particular, about any of our contractors, it is good for us to know. And, you know, with the new contract going into effect March first, we told Waste Management we were gonna hold their feet to the fire on this contract. So I certainly appreciate your reporting.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir.
Anything further? Yeah, because it was, it was a little bit unusual. There's normally, uh, I know DNS down in Smith Valley takes care of the trash. Um, even on, in bad weather, but, uh, you know, I got out there early with a tractor and cleared one into lane. And didn't get any trash pickup. So I was just kind of surprised that, uh, it was still there the next day. But, um, we do need to know about these things from across the county because that's why we had all the information in the new contract. Thank you for your report. Any other, okay, Mr. Foley.
Good morning, Josh Foley, Lyon County Council for the record. As you know, at the last meeting, we approved or the board approved purchasing some additional vehicles to replace, uh, Sheriff's Office vehicles. As part of a discussion on repairing the vehicles and, and having ones out on the street, and I know Commander Powell, I think he said in the past year, he's had eight different vehicles because every time they're down vehicles and we don't have enough, he's volunteering his to go out. Um, one of the ideas that the vehicle maintenance shop has discussed with Andrew and I is to adding a lift to one of their bays. There's a bay that has no lift in it. And a single mechanic can operate more than one bay at a time because you put a vehicle up, pull it apart and you're waiting on parts. If you have another bay to go over to and work, you can do oil changes and other repairs and so on and so forth. So to make them more efficient, there will be a request coming to your next commissioner meeting for approximately thirteen thousand dollars to add a lift to that bay that doesn't have one. But just so you're aware, that's all part of the effort to try and make sure that we have vehicles out on the streets so that they can continue the activities that the sheriff, uh, illustrated in Dave's report. Uh, as far as other items, I did receive notice yesterday that I was appointed to the Committee of Local Government Finance, taking Mary Walker's, uh, seat when she vacated that. So I just wanted to let the board feel like, uh, it's all a halfway way. Questions, comments?
Go Buffalo Bills, right?
Ouch.
Well, you, you know, you guys did beat my Dolphins, so I think, I think I might be pulled for Buffalo too.
Any other appointed official reports? If not, we'll look at advisory board reports. Anybody in chambers? I don't see anybody. Uh, nothing on the board. So we're gonna take, uh, a break until ten-thirty. Uh, see you back here in about five minutes or so. Gonna recall everybody, re-adjourn. Reconvene. We got bugs coming out everywhere.
I know. I had one up here earlier too.
All right, we're gonna reconvene at this ten-thirty-three. Item twelve. Item twelve. Consent agenda. Action be taken on all items. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the board of county commissioners with one action. And without any extensive hearing, any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from these consent agenda, discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. So we have item twelve A through twelve J. Do I have any commissioners wanting to pull any items from that list? Any public entities? If not, then, uh, I will look for a motion on twelve A through twelve J.
I moved that we approved the consent agenda.
Okay. Second. Twelve A through twelve J? Got it? So we have a motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, Keller.
Keller, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Uh, I am going to jump to item seventeen A. There was a late backup on seventeen A, purchase agreement and escrow instructions. Uh, we really received. Our county manager will be coming up for possible action, approved purchase agreement and escrow instructions between Lyon County and Stan Lucas for Lyon County to purchase a seven-point-four acre parcel in the Traditions Project for three million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to be created from APN zero-one-six dash four-zero-six dash zero-three for the Dayton Government Complex project.
Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager, we're getting a map pulled up here, um, real quick, but, um, so you'll remember the Board of County Commissioners voted, oh, it's been some months ago, um, now to direct staff to, um, move forward with negotiations on a piece of land in Traditions. Um, and designating that as the preferred location for the, um, Dayton Government Complex. So we've worked through that process with, uh, the developers of the, um, of Traditions and, um, we are bringing forth this, um, purchase agreement and escrow instructions. Board your review. Um, you can see, uh, in this map that's on the screen there, the parcel that we would be purchasing is the pink one right there in the middle, number one. Um, and it's right, uh, adjacent to the town square that the developer, uh, will be building as a part of that development. So, um, so essentially, um, and I think there's a, we have a little video that we can kind of show you a fly-through of the development, but, um, if you see kind of that round, um, white space at the very bottom of the map, that's the roundabout that currently exists there today. And then you'll have the, the town square area and then the parcel that we, we would be purchasing there. Um, the total purchase price is, uh, three million nine hundred and ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And we would be, um, uh, under this agreement, we would be starting construction, um, and completing construction within sixty months with an optional two-year, uh, extension. So with that, I know there were some changes and so. So with that, I know there were some changes and so. Oh. Um, with that, I'm happy to turn it over to um, District Attorney Wright to provide a couple of changes. Uh, and we've divided a uh. An updated purchase agreement. Just now, there was a couple of little things we had to, had to correct in it, so.
Uh, thank you, Steve Wright, District Attorney. I know the board likes to have the final agreement when the agenda comes out and apologize that in this case that didn't happen. Uh, the agreement though that was with the packet is very near final. And so I just want to go through, there was one change uh, last minute, and there were a couple of dates added. And so I just want to go through a few of the highlights in the agreement, if I could, so um. The uh. Just, and Andrew's discussed or the county managers discussed a few of these things. He did cover the purchase price at the bottom of page one. Uh, that was the price listed in the um, agreement. It has changed a little bit over the last couple of months uh, in relation to some water rights. And that's why the price has gone up just a little bit uh, from the price before. Uh, page two of the agreement, there were no changes in page two from the version. Uh, that was provided in the packet, but I did just want to highlight a couple of uh, this appraisal process. As the boards aware and, and uh, generally when the county purchases property, they have to do an appraisal. This is no exception to that. And this just outlines that process. And if the appraisal comes in below. Uh, the purchase price, then the seller does have an option to back out. Uh, they can also request a second appraiser. And the second appraisal is averaged. And again, if it comes in below the average of the two appraisals, they have an option to buy out. So I just. Want their back out. So I just wanted to uh, clarify that process for the board. Um, and I think uh, Mr. Foley will be working on getting that appraisal set up fairly soon. And uh, we'll keep the board apprised of the status of that process. Uh, page three, uh, this was a change from the, not a change, but an addition from the, the agreement that was in the packet. We added in the date that the parcel would be created for, as February first of this year. That's my understanding that the map, the boundary line adjustment map will record probably today. Uh, or this week, so we'll, uh, we will meet that February first deadline. And then there's a proposed close date. Of, I believe it's April first. Uh, that's been added to the agreement um, as well on. Uh, I think it's back on page one. I'm, I'm sorry, it's right above uh, their page four point two. I apologize for not highlighting that. Uh, but the close date for the agreement and purchase would be April first twenty twenty-four. And then moving through the agreement, again, the other change from the version that was in the board packet is on page ten, section ten point four. Uh, this is, just describes the government center. This agreement really doesn't deal with the details of that. Uh, but does set forth that that's the purpose for the county to purchase it. And then we added in. Um, two changes here attached as Exhibit B, which was the map that Andrew just previously. Uh, showed you is a conceptual site plan for the project and for the general area. And I know Don Schmidt's here. He could speak to that if the board has any questions about the project, the overall project. And uh, the county manager and comptroller are familiar with the, the proposed project for the county. So any questions, they can field on that. The addition and change from the, the version in the packet also is that the. Uh, county would be agreeing to complete construction of the building within sixty months of the closing. So that'd be five years from April first of this year. So I guess that's March thirty-first of twenty twenty-nine would be the completion date. Uh, of construction. And uh, they can request, the county can request an additional twenty-four months. If there's delays for some reason uh, beyond the county's control. And the seller doesn't really have uh, much discretion in denying that. They can't unreasonably withhold that request. So it's sixty months for completion of construction with one twenty-four month extension. Uh, those are the changes uh, from the, the version that was in the packet. I'm happy to have, answer any questions about the agreement. And the process, and then if you have questions about the project, um, Andrew or Josh, you better see to answer those questions.
Yeah, Commissioner Hendricks has your hand up.
Um, that last highlighted area in the sentence just after that, it looks like the word two might be missing.
Oh, I believe that's right. So we can add that in.
Commissioner Keller.
You said that the change uh, that included water rights? Is that what you said in the beginning?
No, there were uh, as the agreement was being negotiated and the county was figuring out the needs for the project. There was some discussion about uh, using water rights as part of the purchase. To provide water rights for uh, there's a kind of a community part of the project. And the county decided that was, or I guess the county manager determined that's not the best way to go. So it was taken out. There was value to that. So in lieu of that, uh, there was an increase in the purchase price. Does that make sense?
Yeah, took it out and.
And.
Instead of adding in, that's what I was.
Cash instead of water rights. Yes.
Anything further?
Yeah, uh, I just want to comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, you have that sixty months, twenty-four months, and in my opinion, the sooner the better. And uh, also can uh, looking at the size of the. The building, I want to make sure that that building encompasses the future, not build this, and we're already behind the eight ball. Going forward, I want it to be big enough that we don't go back. Uh, the sooner the better too. It'll uh, give us more inventory for uh, economic development because we're leasing right now and we're. We're using that stuff and we need that for our tax base. When sooner we get into our building, the sooner that can go back out. Where to help us out.
Absolutely. There is a, a short little video on that the developer provided um. For um, for this, it just, this kind of will fly through the projects. Get that going in a second.
Have you had something, Commissioner Henderson?
Yeah, just, just a comment. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I, I just want to agree with Commissioner, Commissioner Keller, that soon we get this built, the better it is for us. So hopefully it won't take you sixty months.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller, for the record, I appreciate that direction. Just so the board is aware, there's a sixty-day provision to get an appraisal done in the contract. I have a, an appraiser with a contract waiting to be signed for your decision today. Um, sign it today and he said within two weeks we'll have the appraisal done. So. We'll move forward with that. We will hold off on the architect until we actually own the property and know for sure that. We can do that and that we can move forward with architect unless in discussions, uh, we decide to do a different uh, way than design bid build. Um, there is an option there to do a C-MAR process or, or design build type of process. But we have done an extensive amount of work with the architect on the conceptual design previously. Um, both county funded and in addition with some funding from the developers, we were exploring him building it as well. So we'll move forward with that. It is a uh, fairly large building. It has a, a large courtroom, the size of the district court. It has a second room that eventually can be used as a courtroom, but it can use for public meetings. That will be the size of a courtroom as well there, plus um, some area for training for the sheriff's office and thinking for the future as much as we know it is.
One thing I would like to add is that um, with the property, there are room for um, other potential buildings in the future too, if we do need expansion space.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, this, this is off the topic a little bit, but I hope when we're designing this building, there's a room that we could use for meetings. Yes, right now, we don't have any place to meet people. So that's, that would be nice to have a.
All right.
All right. Go ahead. Anything further from commissioners? I didn't see any electric vehicle uh, charging stations planted anywhere in there. I might need some of those uh, with all the mandatory stuff that's coming down. Um, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to uh, say that I do have some extra copies of the map that's Exhibit B that. That Ms. Lopez put up on the screen. If anybody in the audience wants one, or I think the board has copies of that. And also some extra copies of the agreement for changes if anybody in the public wants.
Thank you, sir.
If I'm as a developer, I'd like to um, say a few words.
Sure.
For the record, the name is Master Project One. I just wanted to thank the commission for what we started several months ago, but I really want to tell you what a great staff you have. Both in planning, administration, Josh, it's been a, it's been a pleasure putting this together. Uh, we intend to make this like our focal structure within Traditions. And uh, we've been pretty aggressive out there. We, we've been able to do quite a bit. Before this building is, well, is built, we will have all of our commercial roadways in place, probably a year from today. It, it's an exciting thing. I got a, a box about six years ago that said SimCity on it. I didn't realize it was a real SimCity. And that's what we're doing out there. We're trying to develop uh, housing, uh, government structures, employment. We're tying enterprise. So then now we can go all the way from Fortune Drive to Enterprise without having to run on Highway fifty. Uh, we got our first review comments from N dot on the signal. We anticipate having a signal. In place so that if N dot wishes, they can turn it on in a year. Uh, we'll see how that goes. We're excited about that. Um, I just want to give you a couple of quick stats and I gave these to Andrew. Uh, in fourteen months, we sold our first two phases of Traditions uh, to D R Horton. That consisted of one hundred and thirteen lots. Uh, fourteen months ago, they started their first house. They have pulled one hundred and thirteen building permits. Sixty-five of those units have already been sold. Uh, the gross sales to date in Traditions for housing is exceeds twenty-eight million dollars. That should be a nice little kick to the uh, property tax. Uh, we have sold another hundred and twenty-eight lots to Lennar. They should start construction in late March, early April. We will be starting forty-three, what we, what I call affordable housing. Uh, that will start in uh, March or the first of April. Uh, we have some um. Good indications on commercial development in our hundred and twenty-seven acres of commercial retail. And uh. I, I hope I'm around in five years to see what this looks like. So I just want to thank you again. Great staff. It's been a great process and we've enjoyed it.
Thank you, Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, nice job, big guy. So tell me the affordable housing, how does that look when someone comes to buy that?
You know, we struggle with that and I, I, I said I would never use the word affordable again. Let's use attainable. Now, okay. We're, we're working on some programs that we hope that can work. I've been somewhat successful in Carson City with a, a program of forty-one homes that we did there. And we hope to bring the same type of abilities there. We'll, we'll let Lennar and D R Horton build the big ones and we'll try to build some starter units that. That uh, younger people or retirees can get into and. So I don't know what it's gonna look like now. It's a different county and, and we're working on that marketing program right now.
Because the fear is always that someone comes in, buys five or six of these, and then they become either landlords or raise the price. Is this a, a. Application process or something that you, we can't probably talk about this yet?
Yeah, we're probably getting a little too far off topic.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday.
Okay, Commissioner Keller, did you have something?
I did count how many trees were in there and I liked that in that picture, so we'll hold you to that. Uh.
The help came from Florida.
Lot of grass and a lot of trees, like it all. You know, I, if you wanted to see the end of this faster, you know, we'll work with you on getting that done. You said five years. We can get that done faster.
I, I, I firmly believe that uh, Josh and Andrew and the county are gonna work pretty hard to put that building up as quick as they can. I gotta get my roads done. That's, I, I gotta do my part.
Uh, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Schmidt, good to see you. Um, I'm really excited about this project. I'm glad the government complex is gonna go in there. We're gonna get this done. Every, every day I drive by there, I just, it's more and more every day. So I'm, I'm really excited about it. So keep up the good work.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I really like the concept and I really appreciate how you give back to the community.
We try. We, we really do. You know, I, I, I like, I see Susan's picture up there. That's my associate. It works. Without Susan, we couldn't make a lot of this happen. I just want you to know how long Susan has been on this job. The, the concept of tradition started twenty-one years ago. And we've got our first hundred and thirteen units being built in the last fourteen months. So Susan's been. She's been the, the warrior here. So I want to give her a lot of credit. Thank you all very much. We look forward to this.
And thank you. Any public comment? If not, then I'll look for a motion on seventeen A.
Mr. Chair, I moved that we approve a purchase agreement and escrow instructions between Lion County and Stan Lucas. For Lion County to purchase a seven point four acre parcel in the Traditions project for three million nine hundred ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. To be created from APN zero one six dash four oh six dash zero three for the Dayton Government Complex project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes five zero.
Motion was. I was like, I mean, you said Hendricks.
Oh, Henderson, okay. Yep. All right, we're gonna go back then to thirteen A. Utilities for presentation only. Project update from Utilities Engineer for the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three.
Good morning, Kisho Panda, Utilities Engineer. Um, I'll be presenting the last quarter in this project progress. So here are the list of projects that are at different stages of implementation. As you can see, uh, there are two projects under pre-design and planning. Uh, number one project is a new one that is added to the list in this uh, reporting period. That is Silver Springs General Improvement District, wastewater or treatment plant, erosion improvement. Um, the second one that is also in the planning stage is Silver Spring G I D, F2 disposal preliminary engineering report. So this is an engineering study. Um. One project was moved from the planning stage to the design that is I V R fifteen. Dayton uh, alley road seal replacement project phase two. So as you know, this project has been. So we applied for a grant with an estimated cost of about eight hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars. We got we are lucky to get a funding of six hundred six sixty-two thousand hundred thousand dollars from N W C I A grant. So this is going to be a basically supplier driven project with no construction from outside or bidding. So we'll work with the supplier to replace most of the the chains that are in the treatment process, which is the website going from at the at the figure, and we'll be replacing some of the blowers. And there are about nine major valves to be replaced in the project. We are right now scoping the contract with the supplier, and we'll manage the project in-house without any outside engineer doing the construction services. So as part of this grant, basically, we need to have an executive engineer, which I'll basically managing the construction in-house. We'll begin the construction hopefully meet somewhat to ending in fall, probably three to four months to wrap up this project. Keeping up with it? And we brought the supplier, the manufacturer of that system. It's a package wastewater plant. So we brought the manufacturer brought three, four months back. So what is their input was this system supposed to be changing all those some of the plastic parts periodically cleaning the the diffusers, so it needs to be maintained, or at least the preventive maintenance should be done time to time. What I came to know with the new staff, I think we didn't do touch this system for the last seven, eight years, or I think since the beginning of the project. So what their recommendation is, once you put the new system, at least you follow the manufacturer's preventive maintenance planning or their recommended scheduled maintenance. So the system will stay healthy as well as all the kind of component that needs to be replaced, you need to replace time. Right now, out of nine chains, we're supposed to stay online. One of the chain is not working. Staff is doing great to keep the treatment under the permanent conditions. There are three chains that are leaking, which you can see the air is kind of going. That's also contributing a lot of energy in terms of airflow. So it's going to be efficient if we maintain the system as per the manufacturer's recommendation, which has not been done.
So how can we ensure that this preventative maintenance is?
Well, I think since the recession, what I heard that there is no staff to do this. Basically, they don't stop basically operate the system. So I think we need to have a preventive maintenance plan. Once we finish this project, I think our goal should be to have a stop this maintenance plan so that the things will stay healthy.
I would agree, we need that.
Commissioner Keller.
Just for clarity.
Just for clarity, what is the acronym N W C I I grant? What's that acronym for?
I think if you can help me, but it is most likely National Water Community Initiative, something like that.
Federal grant?
Yeah, hi, David, you told this director for the record. It's the COVID funding. I don't remember the exact definition of it, but it's what the state legislator created for the hundred million dollars that the state provided in COVID funding.
I know which one you're talking about now. Thank you.
Then I just want to address staffing too real quick since you brought it up. So every year when you look at our staffing, we do request additional support out there. It's a it's a balance between funding and rates and trying to get, you know, equipment maintenance stuff. So it's something that we have been addressing. In the last three years, we've applied for more support to be able to do more of our P M program. It's definitely not perfect. We need more staff, but it's a balance between the rates. So we have been increasing the amount of time that we spend out there.
On as far as those grants are because of Silver Springs, because of their low M I and low to moderate income and stuff. We're we're getting more. I'd like to see as much of this we can done while we we're still at that level.
Yep, no, absolutely. And that's, you know, I know with some of the C P F funding coming up, we have a potential project, and Andrew will be talking about that later on in the next couple of months. And so we're looking at that with the 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 average household income out there. So yes, we're trying to max.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to ask quickly on something in that line. Based on my twenty-five years of experience being involved with some of the conferences, national committees before rate payers for wastewater utilities or water utilities in general, right now, the goal is to and extend the life of asset that we put. I mean, if our goal is to just put the capital projects with millions of dollars, rate payers cannot sustain that kind of investment in terms of the capital investment. So only way to sustain the wastewater or water inflet in general, the goal is for the next, I think, decade or long term, how to maintain this system so that you extend the life of these assets so that the life cycle becomes more longer than what you expect. So I think the utility is putting lot of assets in, at least for the last five years, we have almost done thirty million dollar or at least hundred twenty million coming. So fifty million dollar worth of assets, unless we maintain it, wastewater is very corrosive. Things will go bad pretty quick. Okay, I'll I'll jump to my go back. One more next. Follow. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, this is an engineering study to evaluate different alternatives for effluent disposal from Silver Spring Plant. We received or dropped we call preliminary engineering report. So Dow basically studied this for different alternatives that you can think about to dispose this effluent from this wastewater plant. We are reviewing the drop PR at this point. For alternatives, they evaluated in this study. Number one is can we discharge this effluent to let it out? Second one was can we have an irrigation site that can take more effluent for irrigation of different farms or any kind of grass growing operation? Third one, can we build evaporation points to evaporate everything to the atmosphere? The fourth one is naturally the rapid infiltration basins. If you remember, we finished one project like this for rolling a plant. Out of this four, they recommended or their recommendation is for rapid infiltration basin because that's least expensive and that that is feasible close to the plant. And I think they're going to have other discussion with land purchases and on the next geotechnical investigation for this project. David, for the record, so just an update on this too. Okay, this is an engineering study to evaluate different alternatives for effluent disposal from Silver Spring Plant. We received or dropped we call preliminary engineering report. So Dow basically studied this for different alternatives that you can think about to dispose this effluent from this wastewater plant. We are reviewing the drop PR at this point. For alternatives, they evaluated in this study. Number one is can we discharge this effluent to let it out? Second one was can we have an irrigation site that can take more effluent for irrigation of different farms or any kind of grass growing operation? Third one, can we build evaporation points to evaporate everything to the atmosphere? The fourth one is naturally the rapid infiltration basins. If you remember, we finished one project like this for rolling a plant. Out of this four, they recommended or their recommendation is for rapid infiltration basin because that's least expensive and that that is feasible close to the plant. And I think they're going to have other discussion with land purchases and on the next geotechnical investigation for this project.
David, for the record, so just an update on this too. Now that we do have this draft P E R, you know, what they did is they looked at five alternatives. The engineer's recommendation is the the only viable one is the rapid infiltration basins. We had them evaluate three different sites. We have been working with the property owner who who runs the airport. And they've been hesitant to work with us on two of the sites because of some entitlements. And so we've been looking at all these alternatives, but we'll be going back to them in the next month or two for a better answer on this to their rib sites. And the reason I bring this up is because the rib sites that are the closest will minimize the amount of infrastructure cost to be able to build those sites. And so we're going to respectfully ask that we have the opportunity to sit down and talk with them about, you know, purchasing some of those sites again, because the further ones away, we're talking millions of dollars to be able to bring the infrastructure to them. So I'll bring an update to this probably next month or the following month with some more costs associated with it. But we just got this report, you know, the last two, two weeks.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair. So we own the airport, right?
We own the airport, and so unfortunately, the big picture, there's only so many places, the soil conditions out in Silver Springs just don't percolate. I mean, it's soil, it's 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 clay. And so there's only a limited number of sites that really are effective and that work. And so we had our engineer look at all these various sites, and we came up with three sites that had potential. Unfortunately, two of the sites don't work well for the property owner that owns multiple locations. But they'll come in additional costs if we have to go further away. So we are having those discussions right now.
Just to clarify, and asking for the record, the site that would work for the RIV is not on airport property.
It's too bad.
This is IVR fifty Dayton Valley Road Seawater Replacement Project Phase Two. Board approved funding for this, design of this project. Three hundred fifty-five thousand dollar to Loomos. We we are going to kick up this meeting this next Monday. Our plan is to produce the final construction documents by August. This year, we bid the project in summer and towards end of August. Probably will open the bid in September. Observation is planned for October seventeenth or around that time. It's called January, but we'll bring the bid to the board's approval in October. We are very excited after we received these two easements, so there are some construction challenges, hopefully. We we run this project without much hiccup. Rolling a plant expansion, this is on the construction, as you can see. Those four sample photos, the heavy construction going on right now at the site. We began construction in October. This is the fourth month we are in. Construction is progressing very satisfactorily. We are expecting some delay with the project because of one major equipment package delivery delay. At this point, we are still working with the manufacturer. Hopefully, we'll overcome that, but we are expecting probably one to two months delay due to the review of the submitals and other things. We have twenty-four months construction completion as per the contract. It is September twenty twenty-five. But if this delay happens, probably we have to come to the board for approval of extension of time. There are a couple of aspects of this project, what we experienced in last three months, I want to bring it to board's knowledge. The first thing is dowels. When we prepared the scope of work for the Dow construction management, it was only for eighteen months. After that, we built the project. We analyzed the project, so we found that eighteen months was not enough. So the construction contract is right now twenty-four months. But Dow task order for construction management is only eighteen months. So probably we're going to bring to the board an amendment. Not now, maybe one year from today, for extending the time and possibly fee also increase. Second aspect, some of the community concerns on the construction happening. The normal or the regular construction time from seven to five. There is no way we can manage hundred percent construction during that time because it's an existing plant, so there is something what to be done during low flow period, which is midnight to early morning. So we do some construction outside of this regular construction time, and it does impact to the community. We did a heavy construct concrete pouring work in December. And there are a lot of trucks committing or going inside the neighborhood. We try to work with the community, inform with a notification system. And try to do as much as possible, what you can, to minimize the impact to the community over there. There are also some public concerns about the light coming from the construction site, and you can see the construction is the fence is next to the neighborhood. So we work with contractor to kind of divert the lights away from the community so that the impact will be minimal to the community. So we are trying our best. There'll be more concerns because there will be some construction outside of the seventy-five P M time period because we cannot fit everything within that time period. Financially, I mean, I think those are numbers here. We have spent almost four million dollar out of twenty million dollar construction contract. And total project cost is about six point three million out of twenty-four million dollars. Last two projects we completed in the last quarter, this is the lift station two A, so brand new facility along Dayton Valley Road. Construction began in May twenty twenty-two. Final completion and acceptance was in November of this year, sorry, twenty twenty-six. This was quite a bit challenged throughout the project of this nature, particularly that offer during the peak COVID season. Looking back to the financial performance of this project, four point five million about estimate back in twenty twenty-three. We completed below that number with four point four million dollar total construction cost. Contractor, the contract was three point six million, we stayed two point four nine. Within that, we had ten percent about contingency of three hundred, three hundred thirty-three hundred thousand dollars. We spent about sixty or seventy percent of that. We extended the contract three times the time, but we managed to stay within the budget both from the construction management point of views and contractor side. Next one. We also finished this project, the water tank project, say one million gallon water tank on the east side of Dayton. I think both schedule and budget wise, we did very well with this project. We didn't have any time extension. We we started the construction in April of twenty twenty-three, finished within the time period as planned by November of twenty twenty-three. Financially, the final project cost is only four million dollar out of seven point seven five estimated back in twenty 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 twenty-two or twenty-three. Construction contractor, we have four point one four million dollar contract. We finished at three point six three. There is approximately nine or ten percent of contingency built into the contract out of five hundred, hundred thousand dollar. We only spent about twenty-five thousand dollar. So I think staff, contractor, and engineer, we did very well job to stay within the budget for this project and finish within the schedule. That's all I have today. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to. That's all I have today. If you have any questions, I'll be, I'll be, I'm just a check.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The the ten, the ten mile hill tank project, I don't know what contractor you use with them, but use them again, because they got that done. That they didn't mess mess around.
Yes, they did very good job at this. Managing the schedule and body, there are some pickups on the way, particularly some of the suppliers. But we work together, work with the suppliers, has been managed to get those components.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. No, I'm gonna jump to fifteen A. To. Let the sheriff get finished up. If he has anything else he needs to do today.
No.
Thank you.
Before we. Get to your presentation, Mr. Chair, if you could read that one into the.
Yeah, I'm gonna read that in. For possible action, approve amendment to the Food Services Agreement with Trinity Food Services to increase meal cost by five cents. This is an increase of approximately five thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars to be funded from a budget transfer from the general food contingency. Sheriff Hope.
So as the the item says, the way the Lion County Jail is operating was. Serving a hot breakfast, a hot lunch, and then a sack lunch for dinner. Kind of contrary to. How most people eat their meals, and what that does is. It caused a little unrest in the jail at night. That sound like a bleeding heart, but imagine your meal schedule being changed, you served a. Lonely sandwich and an apple at five o'clock, four o'clock, and that's supposed to sustain you through the night, so. It's caused a little unrest and grievances from the inmates. It was changed. Last year. We couldn't find a specific reason why it was changed, but. With the amount of activity we have going in the Lion County Jail. With courts, transfers, bookings, releases. It's a little more undue stress on the deputies to serve the hot meals. During the daytime and then the sack lunch at dinner time. So. We had looked at it, we're actually considering another food company at the time, but at this time. But we had looked at it and wanted to change. That meal plan is the amount of inmates have gone up to some earlier report from sixty-eight to ninety-one, thirty more inmates a day. Will some unrest cause a lot of stress on the deputies in the jail system? So that's the reason for the change. It's not the grand scheme things of our budget, it's not an exorbitant amount of money. But it is significant enough to bring it to the board.
Questions? Comments? I'll become it. So we're gonna have a hot meal at. In the evening?
Yes.
Okay, so just basically flip flopping so that they are happy to go to bed. Great.
We're gonna go from two hots and one cold to two colds and one hot.
Okay. Without any further comments, do I have a motion? Motion, motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve an amendment to the Food Services Agreement with Trinity Food Services. To increase meal cost by five cents. This is an increase of approximately five thousand four hundred seventy-five dollars to be funded from a budget transfer from a general fund contingency.
Another second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Hendricks, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. And now we'll go back to fourteen A.
Thank you, sir.
Fourteen A for presentation only, discussion on transfer development rights, a voluntary and incentive based process by which property owners may transfer development potential. From lands with significant conservation values to lands considered more appropriate for development. Mr. Carriola.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lewis Carriola, Green Development Director. So at the request of Commissioner Henderson, I'm gonna offer today. An overview of term. Transferable development rights. So we'll just do a generalized description of how they might work in Lion County. So to begin, what are T D Rs? How do they work? Transferable direct development rights are a planning mechanism used throughout the country. And essentially, they refer to property owners' rights. Relative to the zoning allowance on their property. In Lion County, we'd be discussing essentially residential development rights. Based on the allowance of your zoning and parcel size. So as an example, a rural residential two acre minimum zone property. That's ten acres in size would have a right to five units. And when a, an administration or administrative process is introduced by a jurisdiction. Transferable Development Rights Program. The way it functions is. There are designated sending areas and receiving areas. So areas where transferable development rights would come from, sending area. And areas where they would be deposited in the receiving area. The county would determine those, and I'll go into some of those details. The key to the transfer is that the sending area is permanently restricted from future development. Those rights are taken away in perpetuity. And typically that is achieved through some sort of deed restriction. Going to more details here. So private lando, I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Can we ask questions?
Yeah, of course.
Yeah.
So. Is there, in this transfer, just so I. Christopher, when we look to this. The sending party, do they generally receive some sort of monetary benefit from the receiving party?
Absolutely, sir, and I will touch on all of that in the in the coming slots. So another important distinction here is that T D R programs are typically typically market driven. And it's a transaction, represents transactions between private property owners. Usually the jurisdiction is essentially a bank or an accountant. Again, I'll go into a lot of details as as we move forward. The county determines the location that can send as well as the location that can receive. These transferable development rights, but does not set the price within the market for a T B R. Establishing a T D R program, were Lion County to consider one should. Should be. Designed to address the goals and policies of the master plan. And there is opportunity here to also address our hazard mitigation plan. Again, I will go into some details as we forward. I think this graphic is 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 pretty effective. In showing the basic concept here. In that sending parcels have an opportunity to retire development potential on their property and retain. The historic uses on that property. In this image, I think the most typical. Transfer that would that would apply in in Lion County would be agricultural lands. That might have further zoning, a number of residential units entitled to, but with no intent to ever actually develop that. Property to that residential density. So a private transaction between landowners, the receiving area. Would pay the sending area property owner for those developer guys. The receiving area then would have a right to develop at a higher density than the zoning would permit. So again, the county would designate the receiving areas, and I will have more details moving forward. But the intent here is to preserve agricultural lands. Maybe steep slopes or flood plains, so that's where the hazard mitigation plan come into play as far as sign of the program. And those lands would be permanently conserved. And then, of course, notably, the sending area would not only preserve their historic uses, but then also have an opportunity to monetize the development potential on their property. So the general county process would include, I'll move right to the bottom of that slide. Number of steps in order to implement one in Lion County, both the master plan and zoning map amendments. Would be required. But additionally, and I think just as importantly, if not more importantly. Designating which areas can send, be sending areas and which are receiving areas. The county's administrative function would be to, of course. Keep an accounting of where transferable development rights have been de-restricted. Where they have been received. Another method that that's used is something. Sort of termed a T D R bank. So the the county could essentially permit property owners to record a deed restriction. Retire in the development potential on their property, and we would keep an accounting of it. At the at the county, but we still would not be setting a price. I mean, if if a developer came in and they were owned a receiving area. And they were interested in purchasing. T D Rs. The county could tell them. Where the the property owner, the contact information for the property owner who had recorded deed restriction for their T D Rs. How to contact them, and then they would conduct a private transaction, county would not be setting the banks. And I think these next few slides with the graphics and maybe explain the the concept a little bit better. Using Smith Valley as an example for what in Lion County would be an appropriate sending area. Large parcels with rural residential twenty acre minimum. Zoning or subject to that zoning. May never have any intent of developing residential uses. But they would like to somehow receive some compensation for the development potential on their property. So in this case. You know, twenty acre parcels could strip the development potential from their property. Record deed restriction against those, make those T D Rs available to a property owner interested in in density bonus. Notably, there are different ways to go about this in different jurisdictions that have different regulations. In Lion County, it probably would would be best practice. To keep water rights on the property so that if the intent was to maintain agricultural uses, that agricultural use could be maintained effectively. In perpetuity. In other jurisdictions, there are bonuses associated with retiring the water rights as well. You know, that, of course, would be part of the discussion in developing a program. But it would seem appropriate here to keep the water rights on the property. Another use potentially for the areas that are conserved. Would be permanent open space or even public recreation. Areas, so there are other options for the sending areas for that land to be used. So I have, the next slide, we'll we'll touch on Lion County, but our neighbor to the west, Douglas County, does have a T D R program in place. I did lift some of the the language and process from them. Incidentally, I did work for them also as a planner, so I'm somewhat familiar with it. One of the areas where there is a receiving area in Southern Gardnerville, the Gardnerville Ranch house is depicted here in the slide. And you'll note to the east and to the south, that orange area around the existing development of the Gardnerville Ranch house, residential subdivision, is all receiving area. And if then were the county to consider. You know, developing a T D R program. This, in my mind, is is one of, if not the most important part of developing the program, which is designating. The receiving areas, and then secondarily, where, what, where are the sending areas? The key to the receiving areas would be that these are places where the county has determined. That growth and intense, or intensified growth, right above what the zoning currently permits, is appropriate. So. Those areas should be in areas, in places where. Transportation infrastructure is in place, where public utilities can be easily extended. Where emergency response times could be shortened, of course, because. The development of the community would happen in a place where services are already provided. And not located to incompatible uses, so you certainly wouldn't want to put a receiving area next to industrial areas, basically. So then sort of throwing it into Lion County, this this concept. You know, looking at Dayton, Silver Springs, or areas around Yerington are the obvious places that would would ju- jump to someone's mind. As an appropriate area, maybe for for further expansion, because they would have those qualities I discussed in the previous slide. Which is existing roadways and existing infrastructure associated with utilities. That that statement there at the bottom of the slide, I think, is paramount coordination with public utilities and their capacities. Needs to be a careful consideration in considering where receiving areas should locate. Another thing to consider for receiving areas is. Should they be designated for zoning districts with smaller lot sizes or larger lot sizes? If if. If a parcel was was entitled further zoning minimum parcel sizes to five units. And now suddenly we've designated it it as a receiving area, and now they could have fifteen units. What is that going to look like? How do we establish what development standards are going to be in place for the receiving area? So, you know, those are are things like setbacks, like. Do we need recreational amenities, for instance, where now we're looking at denser residential development? Are there height limitations that need to be sort of established for a receiving area? Alternatively, we could have larger lot sizes. As are receiving areas, so twenty acre minimums, and now suddenly there's going to be one acre lots, for instance. So there are quite a bit of sort of unknowns in establishing a program. And that's why I think, again, the receiving area and sending area conversation. Is something that should be had prior to developing or asking staff develop an actual text. So this slide sort of runs through what the both the master plan and text amendments would look like. First, the master plan doesn't currently include any language directing. You know, future development in the county to include a transferable development right program. So we would need an amendment to that map, I mean, to the to the master plan to direct. Establishing of the program, but then most importantly. The master plan map should be where we identify. Sending areas and receiving areas, really, but, well, I'm sorry, I'll take that back. Where we identify receiving areas. The areas where the county envisions appropriate and responsible intensification of development. The master plan amendment would also, of course, direct the the establishment of the ordinance for. Addition to, it would be Title fifteen or Development Code. That zoning text amendment, as previously mentioned, should probably include some sort of. Language about development standards, how are they applied? One way to do that is. If the the density for the receiving area. Is somehow compatible to one of our existing development standards associated with a denser zoning district. Then we could adopt that, for instance, if twenty acre minimums with large setbacks, and now the density on the receiving area was analogous to our forty-five hundred acre. Lot size, then we could adopt a smaller lot size development standards and setbacks.
Forty-five hundred acre.
Forty-five hundred square feet. I I I felt it too, I knew something was wrong, thank you, sir.
I think you just asked to see if we're paying attention.
No, sometimes I just get rambling, I apologize. I, of course, this probably doesn't need to be said, but this this concept can be a little difficult to understand, so. Any sort of adoption or discussion should include a public information campaign. I certainly would expect, were were this to occur sometime down the road, the planning staff would be attending cabs. And certainly be engaging this planning commission.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. So just as I'm wrapping my mind around this. I would think it would be very hard for us to identify sending areas, because. I mean, wouldn't that be a little bit fluid at times? I mean, we've, it would be almost impossible to think of every area that could be a sending area.
Yes, sir. So one method of doing that, of trying to determine where a sending area would be, is. At least in Douglas County, the way they do it is identify zoning districts. In Lion County, they have a nineteen acre minimum size zoning district, and they designate those zoning districts as sending. In other words, if you have a multifamily. Zoned parcel, that's not going to be a sending parcel. That is, the parcel's already zoned, multifamily, because it's in the in a place where there should be a higher density development, we're not going to transfer out of that and send it somewhere else. The sending areas typically should be larger lot sized parcels, typically with agricultural or resource type of zoning.
Right, so that helps that. And then Chairman Hockaday, if I may, so. Let's say hypothetically, we'll see something from the RR twenty that you kind of mentioned as an example, transferred to an area. Let's say in central Lion County. And now they request. It goes RR twenty. Down to. Are those, so now all of a sudden, the per- the purchasing party or the receiving party. Wants to change that to nine thousand square foot. Lots. Is that done before it's transferred or or is that something that will we get? And then we see the request for zoning change like we see all the time with developers.
So that's where the master plan designation of receiving area comes into play. We'd have to work out the details of what the receiving area would look like. I I don't know that a zoning change is actually always necessary. Provided the areas recognizes the receiving area in the master plan. So that's where the establishment of the.
Right there, that cleared it up.
Commissioner Keller. So looking at this. This is a recently settled agenda item in the past for. They took it completely off of Title fifteen because of the discussion that was taken for us. So if this is going to come. Before us again, I I want all that information. Why they didn't took it off in the first place back so we can. Hear everything that was said in the first meetings, right? So I'd like to have all that information. I'm looking at this as. If I have. Say twenty acres where they want to transfer to, we're saying that we're going to increase the density to to transfer to that receiving area. And to me, if it makes sense already for that receiving area. To have higher density, I would all, we would, they could just come before us and do that. Right in the, you know, if it makes sense, it makes sense, right? So we're artificially saying that we're going to increase it. We're picking and choosing where. These areas are to increase it where it doesn't make sense, because if it makes sense, they can just. Come in and and apply and and do it and would listen to what it has to say. So to me, it's your. You're artificially creating a market. And picking winners and losers on that and in directions. I understand the reasoning why you want to do it is because of the like saving the river or whatever, but we do that through master plan and zoning. To where there's only so much density in that flooding area and they have to build to that and it makes sense. But when all of a sudden we're giving them. Fifty more lots somewhere else where it doesn't make sense. And quite frankly, I'd rather staff took more time doing what's before them now than, because this is going to be quite a project to even. Bring forward, discuss, and it might not even happen.
I wouldn't dispute the fact that we have plenty to do.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I kind of have a little different take on this, you know. We we get a lot of. Projects that come through here. And a lot of times the opposition is, you know, this is a rural area. We want it to stay rural. This is a tool that would allow that, doesn't have to be used by everybody, probably wouldn't be used by everybody. But people that, especially in the in the rural residential agriculture areas that want to keep their. Their property rural and agriculture. This would be a tool for them to do that. And and still receive some some, you know, money for it. I I mean, I think it's a tool that we should have in our toolbox. So that's my comment.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I just have a question. Master plan can be amended. Once you've established your property as. Sending area, can that ever be rolled back?
Interesting question. The this. The suggested means of identifying the sending area was that it would be associated with a zoning district. Of course, without any establishment of either receiving area or an ordinance, that that would all be part of a discussion in in staff development.
And if asking like, I think your question was, basically, if they sold their development rights, could that ever be ruled back?
Yes.
Right. And the answer is no, it would be a permanent deed restriction, so.
Anything further?
My apologies.
Another question, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just thought of a question. Just because we establish a sending area, there is no requirement for a property owner to apply for a TDR.
Absolutely. I even receiving areas would never. Consider the addition of that. I I did have sort of an. Okay, just had one more slide, and this might be getting too far ahead. But I did want to just sort of show an example of how Douglas County includes not just. A development right process based on base zoning. But they also include some other incentives. I only picked two of them out of what they use. I think a lot of them are not or would not. Be applicable in Lyon County. However, they they do provide bonuses of, and we have the calculations here after the explanation. Of seven units per one unit allowed for the zoning. If the sending parcel is within a FEMA special flood hazard area. So this is a way to incentivize property owners who. Feel that or do have a development right. But their development rights are within an area that if. If the county had it had its way, we would not have development in special flood hazard areas. We would be moving that. Development potential to an area that is not at a risk of flooding. So in that, in this case, again, there's there's a bonus of seven units. Over and above what's allowed for the zoning. Another bonus that that's outlined here is is twenty units for sending area. That consists of one hundred contiguous acres. I will say, just sort of. At at first blush, these numbers do look somewhat excessive for application in Lyon County. So in this case, as as an example, using the the regulations on the slide, a one hundred acre. Parcel with RR twenty zoning in the AE flood zone would be entitled to five base units. Thirty-five bonus units for being in the AE flood zone. And then an additional twenty units for the contiguous acreage. So you can see where with this bonus structure. Property owner is really incentivized who owns large pieces of agricultural land. Permanently deed restricted, development potential on that land in perpetuity. Because now suddenly they can, they can produce, in this case, they will produce sixty. TDRs, the potential sale to a developer in a receiving area. I'm not suggesting that that would be appropriate here. I just wanted to show you a practical example of something that's codified just in the neighborhood. I'll leave this slide up and, of course, I'm available for questions, although I do want to stretch. Information only, and we don't have anything in place at this time.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Uh, just want to thank Mr. Carriola. That was very informative for me. I appreciate it.
Thank you for the presentation. Any further on that? Right? Presentation only and we're done with the presentation. Getting close, I'm just going to ask. Consideration of time, do you want to take a break for lunch? Yeah, we do. We have, I'm looking at sixteen A, which is a, you know, could be a long discussion, but. We'll move on then. Advisory Board sixteen A for possible action. Provide direction to staff for the appointment process to citizen advisory boards requested by Commissioner Keller, so. We have County Manager.
Interesting line, County Manager. Yeah, so Commissioner Keller requested a a discussion on. The appointment process for the advisory boards. So I'll just kind of give you a quick overview of what happens when we have a. A vacancy currently and then over to the board for discussion. Currently, when when we're notified of a resignation or somebody's term expires. I I generally, either myself or Aaron notifies the board that there is a a vacancy. We know, we advertise it in the newspaper for a set length of time, usually will. Usually take about a month or sometimes a little bit longer depending. And then we get the applications in and bring those before the board. Sometimes. There's only one application. Sometimes there's many. It just depends on the board and interest at that time. But that is pretty much how that process works currently. So we're open to suggestions to improve it. Certainly, I'll turn it over to the board for.
Commissioner Keller. And I requested this because I just wanted a little more time to. As applicants come forward, if if it's not in the nature of they need someone on there right away. To fulfill the board to have a quorum. If it's, you know, a five man board and there's a couple spots. I'd like to have the opportunity to research it, give more people time to apply, especially since we're getting people that are applying. And not committing, they're they're coming, they're re- resigning rapidly. I don't know if the commitment was there, they're not, uh, we have two boards that I'm aware of that. They won't even step up and be the secretary or do any of the duties. And so we're having those conflicts and so I'd like to make sure that person, you know, the little gives us a little bit of a. A group to pick from, that's all. And that's the only thing, as I was just saying, you know, we get. The application now for a month or something and then as those applications come and then do it instead of doing it right away. As soon as we receive an applicant. That we make a decision. I just wanted to have a little more time for a decision process, that's all.
And just so you know, most of the time we don't do it right away. It is after that that time period is up, but I mean, we can certainly. We have several there, I know. This this go around, yes, but.
Aaron Lopez, for the record. Each board is kind of intricate in their own, how many people are on it. So if we do say have one board with three members and one person's missing, then we try to fill those as quickly as possible. The other thing I just wanted to point out is that with our new appointment process, once they are appointed. We have to give them thirty days to get their required training done. And their oath completed. So if you're asking us to wait at least a month, it'll probably be two to three months, depending on how long you want it to wait. So just for clarification, if you did want us to hold it, how long?
I was looking at just having like a month, you know, and then go through the process instead of getting it right away. So advertise for a month and then. Put it on the next agenda item for us is what I was looking at. These are advisory boards to me to where. It's not that I would need them all filled. I just want quality people there that are. They're giving us the information we need, not just to fill a a spot.
Yeah, and and sort of just to kind of address why we are moving forward with somebody's a little bit faster, like. You know, we've we've got a couple of items later on in the agenda, one for the Dayton Regional Advisory Board, for example, there's three vacancies on that right now. So they don't, they can't meet, had to cancel this last month's meeting. So we have been trying to move those forward. At a little bit faster pace. So I do agree. And then Silver Springs as well, I mean, yeah, two two vacancies on that one. So you're one away. If somebody can't meet it, make it, then then you've got a. A forum issue, so.
Right, but at the same time, I want to make sure that person is what the community also wants to represent them, not just the first person that. Signed up because we've had some. Or I've got phone calls of why was that person put on him? Because it was only applicant. Right? And so to they and their response was, we didn't know there was an opening. So given the time to know that there's an opening, if they don't step forward, it's their own fault, right?
Sure. Certainly something we can do also, you know, I mean, the the board doesn't have to make an appointment when one of these applications comes forward, just because we have an applicant, doesn't mean that. That they have to be appointed.
Commissioner Jacobson, you had your hand up.
I was thinking about this, reading through the packet and getting ready and. I guess these are volunteer positions, so first of all, I appreciate anyone and everyone that's signing up for this or applying for. And with that. I guess. To Commissioner Keller's comment about, well, why did you appoint this person? Why'd you appoint that person? You know. Why didn't you put in, well, I didn't know about it, but yet they knew about who was appointed. And so I just questioned whether they actually knew. About the position or if they're just have a bone to pick with the person that did step up and volunteer. So in thinking about this. I know this isn't, well, I guess it is possible action. I'm gonna just. Vote to keep this system the way it is.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I. But I agree with the process it takes about a month or so, which is what our process now takes, you know, at least a month. We had, we 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 advertise the openings on our webpage, correct? Excuse me?
Facebook, not our webpage.
It should be, it should be on our webpage too. The the citizens advisory boards talk about, you know, when they have vacancies and stuff. But if we have a a two vacancies on on a board. And we only get one application, I don't want to hold the one application until we get two or three, you know. But we get people volunteers, they want to volunteer, I appreciate them and and I I. Yeah, I I don't see a problem with it, with moving, we just want.
I do understand your concern because it seems like we do have a whole lot more turnover than we used, ever used to. My only thought on that is that, like you said, it would be ideal if we could agendize it once and have all ready to go. My thought is is that that doesn't always happen that way. Sometimes it can take a long time. Sometimes, like some boards will only have four the entire year. We never find that good person. So ideally, I would love it if it would work out that way, but. We don't know if and when, how many people we can get to apply.
Definitely a tough one and and certainly we can, we can start putting a note on our our webpage.
Yeah, because I don't, you know, a lot of people don't even know we have a Facebook page.
You think you've got the greatest communication in the world and. No one told me.
Yes, your responsibility to find out.
I did send out an email this week to remind the advisory boards to make sure that they are. Advertising on their agendas. I don't know if specifically they were doing it in their reports, but I did ask them specifically to make sure.
Yeah, my advice, of course, would be to advertise on everything we can. You know, we do have next door neighbor. There's a lot of different areas that we don't. Send out any information on great Facebook, but you know, we just, direction now would be make sure it's on the website. We just need to get the word out because, you know, like Smith Valley, we've got an empty spot and. Nobody's even called me or talked to me about it. I have approached some people, but. You know. We need the time for people to apply and we need to make sure everybody knows that there's openings and I think that's. Kind of a good thing to bring up as far as Commissioner Keller bringing this up. You know, it is, it isn't something where we have everybody beating the door down. So get as many people as we can, pick the best qualified that we can possibly get and move on with that. So my direction at this point would be. Let's advertise as much as we can and keep that month long, you know. Timeframe so that we can possibly get more people applying. That's my comments. Anything else from the commissioners?
Chairman Hockaday, I guess just a point of order. I I may have said. I'm going to vote to keep it status quo, but do we even need to take action on this if no one makes a motion to change something?
No, you don't have to take action.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Do you, do you have some discretion on how long you do that? Because I know. I think on that last, at least on the last planning commission, you guys decided to wait longer and. Do that. So can you already do that?
Yeah.
If you choose to.
Specific to the last planning commission, I mean, we hadn't, I think we hadn't received any applications. We had maybe one. And there was people that were interested, so we left it open for a little bit longer to allow them to get their.
So currently, it's kind of up to your discretion?
Correct.
Okay.
And specifically, like if the board can't meet. They need help, then we try to jump in there as quickly as we can to help them out. Kind of depends on where the board's at. They have form, if they don't, how much help they need, if this person. If the chair reaches out to me or someone within the community or. They say they expect this application, if we could please be forward with it, I always try to oblige anything that is asked.
Commissioner Keller, if I may ask a question, did you have a minimum amount of time that you wanted to see him in?
I just wanted to advertise for like a month. That way we've got the the time that that the community, if they don't reach out, if they don't figure it out within the. That way we've got the, the time that, that the community, if they don't reach out, if they don't figure it out within the month, then we move forward. But that gives us a little bit of a pool and we can also ask questions and see who's dedicated. I, I understand a volunteer is a volunteer, but we got two boards right now. Well, we got boards that aren't boards because there's no people on there. And then we got boards that we don't even have a secretary. Because they don't want that position. And to me, and, and it's not an agenda item, but maybe we should be looking at how we rotate people in. Positions on those boards so that they all participate. But to me, we've got requirements from. From our level that we need the secretary's job done. It's probably the most important job on the board. And I wanted to interview the people that come and say, you know, what's your dedication to it? And if someone says I'd do that. I'm gonna lean more toward that guy that's gonna participate. So that's where I, I'm kinda, I wanna try and build the pool a little bit bigger, but not. Restrict us to a point of. Uh, after we need somebody on there for the board, we just gotta get that through. I understand that, but if there's a. Five man board and there's three people already, the most that could happen is they missed a month.
Okay. Yeah, I, um. I, you know, I think that that's, that's reasonable, the month long thing is reasonable. Like I said, it's our typical practice. We've got a few on here that, um, actually I think. The, uh, specific to the Dayton one, I believe that application did come in over a month ago. Correct on that one, um.
It's been actually everything.
Yeah, so.
So. Is this something that says for possible action, but that's stuff you can just. I mean, basically fill it out, whether or not it's important to us to. Fill a board, or if it's not important to give us a little bit more time, it'd be all done. Without a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, Commissioner Keller, I do want to ask you one question. You mentioned prior about the parks board. And wanting their, um. Geographical locations put onto the agenda item.
I didn't ask for the geographical locations.
So I just wanted to clarify on that. I just wanted to give some history. Prior to that, we had each. Member from the advisory boards. So we'd have a volunteer, not a volunteer, they are, but. We would take one from each board to make up the consensus of the parks board. We couldn't fill the board. So then we made it as a member at large, so we changed the resolution so we could open it up. But I can certainly, what we can do is each member just write where is their area of location.
Yeah, and, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, yeah, cuz my, my point on that is cuz that. That's the one board that we have. That goes all the way across the northern part of the county. So. It would be more fair if we had, you know, people from the different communities along. US fifty on that board. That's, that's the only reason I was asking for the locations.
Commissioner Keller?
So sitting on that board for so many years and going through the process. One of the main reasons is because of the flow chart of how information, how that money gets spent and how. How it comes from community interest forward to, to the advisory board, then to the parks board. And then to the county commissioners. It's, there's a process of what it's supposed to go through. And the, and the. The benefit to having an advisory board member sitting on the parks board. Was that they would do a parks board report. At each of the meetings so that there was that dialogue between the two and became more efficient. And I, I wish we could get back to that.
I can, um, try being more diligent about emailing all the advisory boards and saying, hey, we have openings and we would like. Representative from your board, if someone would like to participate, so I could try. So reaching out to them more often about it.
I, I would, if there was two applicants, I'd favor the one that was sitting on the. On an advisory board already, because it would be able to bring reports back, so.
Anything further? So. I'm thinking we have some information directed, uh, I don't know that we need a motion on that, we're saying.
We have public comment online.
Public comment, yep, we'll look at that. Uh, Mr. Davis has hands up on Zoom. And you are.
Hello, I think I'm unmuted now. Is that, can you hear me?
We, we can hear you fine.
Um, I think that one thing I'd recommend on the website for the advisory boards. Is to maybe have a permanent link where people could sign up. As an expression of interest. Even if the advisory board is full. And there's not a need to take an application at the time. Someone could express interest. And then when a position becomes available, uh, the, the, uh. Office could contact that person and say, uh, a position is available now. Uh, would you like to submit an application?
Any further comments from the public? Thank you. If not. And, uh, we're not gonna go through a motion, we're just gonna move on. Staff has marching orders on that one. Sixteen B for possible action appointed chairman for the first meeting of the Dayton Regional Advisory Board. Letter of transmittal on sixteen B.
Um, Aaron Lopez for the record, it was brought to my attention that both, um, the chair and vice chair, um. I won't say retired, but retired from the, the board, um. What did not happen was a replacement to be. What was asked was for someone to then have a motion on their agenda prior to this year, so that we would have. A vice chair or chair to take over. So that did not happen. So what we need, um, from the board is just for them to appoint a chairman temporarily. So that they can meet, open the meeting and go through the process of their own appointment.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Keller?
Wasn't Chris Gonzalez the chair at one time?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. That's all I need to know.
Okay. So. Any other comments from Commissioner, Commissioner?
Um, I think Chris Gonzalez, he's the one who sent it in and is kinda trying to keep this thing afloat, so he would be my recommendation.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
Um, any public comment? If not, I'll accept the motion for me, if you'd like.
I moved that we appoint Chris Gonzalez as chair of the board. For the first meeting.
Dayton Regional Advisory.
Yeah, Dayton Regional Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have, uh, motion by Commissioner Hendricks and a second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
He's online, so he could have complained if he didn't want it.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. So Mr. Gonzalez is, uh, appointed the chairman as of now and they can work it out. If you had to know your date.
You got a thumbs up from him, so that works.
Okay, super. Uh, sixteen C for possible action, and we do have a late backup on this, an additional application. Uh, appoint up to three members to the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five. And two terms expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four. We have. Mister. Davis and the, um, late backup. Or that one, um, Mr. Wyman. So any commissioner comments on that? For those two applicants? Any public comment? If not, I'll go for a motion on sixteen C.
Mister Chair, I moved that we appoint Jim Davis. To the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with a term expire in December thirty first, twenty twenty five. And we appoint Mr. Ronald Wyman. To the Dayton Regional Advisory Board with a term expire in December thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Henderson, do I have a second?
A second.
Commissioner Hendricks for a second, all those favors say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. For possible action, acknowledge the resignation of Michael Irvin and Stacy Sell from the Silver Springs Advisory Board. Any commissioner comments? Any public comments? Say thank you for being on the board. Sorry that you are resigning, uh, and for a motion. The motion.
Um, just. Uh, when I was going through this packet, I couldn't help but notice Ms. Sell's. Um, resignation letter and the fact. She, it looks like she's kinda active in the community. Because of some recent. Or he, Stacy?
Yeah.
Right, sorry. Because of some recent. Events, I, Stacy Sell will be resigning my position on the Silver Springs Advisory Board effective. Immediately with like four exclamation marks. Is there something that? Some support that we didn't give, or is there something that we should know?
Haskin, Lyon County Manager, no, um, it was, um. It was something to do with, uh, with. The elections on the, the board, so.
Okay.
I, I do follow.
Alright, I just wondered if there's something the board fired him up on or whatever. So yeah, I'll accept their resignation.
I had the same question, uh, uh, so I, I followed up with it and, uh. We're good.
Alright. So a motion on that.
I moved that we acknowledge the resignation of Michael Irvin and Stacy Sell from the Silver Springs Advisory Board.
Hey, motion by Commissioner Hendricks.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jacobson. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero to accept resignation letters. Uh, sixteen C for possible action, appoint up to two members to the Silver Springs Advisory Board with one term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty four. And the other term expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five. We have one applicant, Adam McGuire. Okay, any comments on that from commissioners? Any public comment on that? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion for Mr. McGuire.
I moved that we appoint Adam McGuire to the Silver Springs Advisory Board with one term. Expiring December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
Right, second?
Second.
Yes, Commissioner Keller? Alright, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero.
He's online if he wanted to introduce himself.
Um, let me see.
Yeah. Hello, uh, I. I, I didn't hear any opposition to Jim Davis and, uh, I didn't think I would need to give some public comments to this, but. Hi, I'm Adam McGuire. I've been looking at the Silver Springs Advisory Board for a little bit. I attended. A meeting a while ago, but immediately after, uh.
Okay.
There we go. I, I don't know what happened there. I apologize for that, board. As I was saying, I've been watching the Silver Springs Advisory Board for a while. I've been a resident of Lyon County. Legally a resident for a long time, including. During my active duty service in the Navy. And when I came back, I've been here since twenty, physically back since twenty seventeen and. Got a house in Silver Springs and I'm happy to be here and I want to get involved in the community and. Help the community establish a good sense of community here. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McGuire. Okay, we will move down to seventeen B for possible action review, potential Lyon County request for community project funding. From the Nevada Congressional Delegation, provide direction to the county manager on which request should be included and how they should be ranked.
Guess I made that spreadsheet kind of small. Alright. Um, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager. So, um, we're getting ready for, um. Putting in for community, community project funding appropriations, uh, through, um. Our congressional delegation. And so the board had asked to review, um. What our, uh, proposed request would be, uh, to have an opportunity to rank them and. Um, you know, determine if there was something we didn't want to do, or if there's something that we missed. I reached out to, um, all of our, uh. Department heads with departments that would, um, have categories that could be eligible for, uh, community project funding. And, um, this was the list that we came up with. There was a couple that I, um, I, I looked through and, um. Didn't include in this list for one reason or another, mostly because we, we just weren't quite ready there yet with a plan on how to. How to execute it, um. And so this is, um, this is what we, we came up with. I'll go through them real quick and then turn it over to the board for discussion. Um, they are currently not in any order. Um, I just threw them on the list there. So. Uh, first one was the Mount House Community Center, um. I put in, uh, on the amount, seven hundred thousand. Reason being that, and I realize that's more than, uh, what we had talked about with Mount House in the past. Reason being seven hundred thousand was because it takes a bit of time to go through this process. We're still waiting on funding from last year.
I think you should put on a million. Seriously.
Well, eh, I mean, that's, that's certainly a point of discussion, but, uh, um. But anyway, we, uh, we put that, that on there, um. And this would be request funding to finish the remodeling of the fire station into a community center. Um, completing this community center remodel would allow the community to better use the building for community, so. Second one was for a sheriff's training facility. We put nine hundred thousand in there for that. This is a repeat from last year, uh, that we didn't get. So, um, the sheriff's office needs a room to conduct classes and hand-to-hand tactical training. When we remodeled the upstairs of the justice complex, uh, they lost their training space, so, um, this would be really, uh, really helpful to have. Um, next one would be emergency backup generators for the admin building, Urington, Dayton and, uh, Urington, Dayton and Silver Springs seniors and. Um, so we've had a few power outages during com- commission meetings, um, and, you know. It, it doesn't just disrupt commission meetings, but it also disrupts, um, you know, staff's ability to get things done. Um, this building doesn't have a backup generator. We actually have a generator, but, um, so the price would, um, be for, um. Wiring up a new panel and, um. Taking care of that, uh, so, um, and then, uh, the three senior centers. Um, the issue there is that we store perishable food and, uh, refrigerators and freezers there. And, um, and the power outage, we don't have any way to do that. So if we were to have a prolonged power outage, we could lose quite a bit of food. Um, at those facilities. Plus, we also use them as. Warming shelters or, um, you know, evacuation centers and event of an emergency. So, um, it would be helpful to have generators there in case there wasn't power. So that was four hundred thousand dollars, we figured can get that done. These amounts, by the way, are tentative, um, I. We're, uh, we've got a little bit more time before we put in these requests, so I'm gonna solidify them a little bit more, but I wanted to. Bring that before the, bring this before the board now, um, and make sure that that's what board wants to move forward with before we. Before we, uh, do a lot of the legwork and cost everything out. For a project such as that. Um, the next one is, um, most vehicle retrofit, um, this is a retrofit for law enforcement SUV to allow for a clinician to sit next to a detainee. During transport, while the detainee is fully enclosed to provide safety to the clinician, um. But in there, eighty thousand dollars again, that's a number that I would want. That's not for the retrofit, that would be for the vehicle and the retrofit, um, so that's something that. I would, uh, we, we verify that price, so. Um, the Dayton Sewer Fund, um, or, excuse me, the. Old Town Dayton Sewer Main and Manhole Rehabilitation Project, this is funding to rehabilitate and replace sewer mains and manholes. That are in poor condition in Old Town Dayton, um, so it'd be to re- rehabilitate, uh, twenty seven, hundred and ninety. Uh, linear feet of gravity sewer main and replace, uh, thirteen hundred and twenty linear feet of gravity sewer main. And rehabilitate, uh, four manholes and replace seven man.
Worker access covers.
Worker access covers, um.
People.
And the estimated cost on that is, um, two point four million. And actually, so I need to change this because, um. That, that includes the full amount, however, there is a twenty percent match with these types of requests, so. Um, the actual request would be one point nine. Um, next we have the Storm Drainage Repair Project, um, in Silver Springs. This is funding to design and permanently repair the onsite damage. To gravel and asphalt surfaces and lagoon berms from, uh, severe storm on August twenty sixth, twenty twenty. Um, and develop a stormwater management plan and perform a. Um, salary survey to confirm the area served by the GID is disadvantaged as a community, um, as defined by NAC. Um, so the estimated cost on this one is, uh, six hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight dollars. Um, the next one is the Sheep Camp Dam Rehabilitation Project, uh, uh, funding to design and mitigate corrective actions. Identified by the. Identified by the Nevada Division of Water Resources Dam Safety Group. Uh, the Sheep Camp Dam is classified as a high hazard dam and is rated in poor condition by the Dam Safety Group. The estimated cost on this is one point six million dollars. And then um, lift station improvement project for the Willow Creek GID funding to design and replace the uh, sewer lift station pumping mechanism. And to perform a uh, salary survey um, similar to the um, Silver Springs one to confirm that it's a. Disadvantaged community. Um, the estimated project cost is two hundred and fifty thousand on this. I just realized that I forgot to include one. Um, and it was a carryover from last year and it was uh, the Ramsey Weeks. Um, rehabilitation, which we estimated last year to be about ten million dollars. So I'd keep it about the same. So um, with that, I'll turn it over to the board. Happy to answer any questions that I can and um. We can rank these if you'd like, if there's ones that we missed. Keep in mind that um, you know. With CPS, there's certain pots of money that, that you know, basically certain. Grant funds, if you would like, that uh, a project has to fit within. So it's not just open for anything. Um, so. Just want to throw that out there.
Commissioner Keller.
So in the past, when I looked at this, uh, you just hit the nail on the head right there. We can rank it, but that isn't necessarily the rank that it's going to happen. And we have to go by what we can.
Correct. Uh, that's, I, I should clarify that as well. So um, what, what will happen is, you know, we can rank them and certainly um. Tell our congressional delegation that this is, you know, what our preference would be. However, last year, that is not how it worked at all. Uh, and that's totally fine. Uh, we're, we're very appreciative of the projects that we got that. But I do want to prepare the board for that. So.
So going last year and when we did that, what made the most sense to me is what flies off your tongue the best on your. How you're going to present it because that's what we did last time as we referred to our county manager after uh, shaking hands and niceties and everything. Let you present it and it's, it's how does it flow with you because we wanted to look very professional and we don't want you jumping back and forth and look like we, well, we just want a bunch of stuff. We want it to have some kind of a flow. So. I kind of go off of what you, what's best from you. Uh. Being said, if there's money for a community center, that's not going to go toward Ramsey Weeks rehabilitation. And so we're going to go. Give it, you know, wherever we can get it, we're going to get it. And so to me, that's where. Naturally health and safety is number one priority to me. And then I'd like to give the county manager the opportunity to be presented the best way possible.
Yeah, I mean, I think critical infrastructure projects are probably our highest priority, but after that, just leave it up to Andrew to present it as he wishes.
I would say that now that I see the list in front of me and we've added Ramsey Weeks from last time, um, I, I would like a little time to. Kind of. Look at these and decide. Um, with some emphasis on, you know, infrastructure and health and safety, which is excellent, but. And I see that first one, Mount House Community Center. I know that's been promised for twenty something years. Um. We could get something on that. That'd be great for that community. But uh, I, you know, now that I can see this in front of me. Sitting here looking at different items going, which way would I move it up, down, which one would I want? Uh, I'd kind of like a little bit of time to look at this a bit more.
And I do apologize. I had every intention of having it included on the, the agenda uh, with the packet, but uh, just didn't happen. So.
It's all right. Just. Cause I, I can get back with you, you know, and. Probably by the middle, the beginning of next week, at least what I think. I don't know if what the other commissioners might want to do.
I think uh, Chairman, I'll just interrupt you. I, I agree. I think you brought it back. Can, is it, or do we need to act on this now?
Um.
We need it by.
The only thing is the public hasn't really seen this list, so. To get through public feedback, I mean it. It would be nice to have this brought back to the nation.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. I, I, I agree. I think it would be helpful now that we have this list. For us to take it and bring this back at the first meeting next month. That way we have time to, each of us can individually rank them and then we can just discuss it when we get here or it might even think of something else that's not on here. So.
And then my concern is that. The meeting in DC is coming up really fast and that's why I'm saying it's kind of. Last minute here, but you know, I do want you to have a chance to look at what we plan and, and kind of. In your own head, figure out how you're going to uh, set forward like Commissioner Keller saying. You know, the, the more reasonable the approach with our uh, congressional group. The more they might listen.
I think, I think this li- sorry Chairman, I think this list is. I mean, you could prepare for all of them. I don't think we're asking for. For uh, less preparation time or, I mean, all these things made the list. They're all valid projects. They're all worth going for. Um. But I think if we bring them back, it won't seem like a surprise uh, to taxpayers.
Yeah, so um, in our next meeting is February first, um. We're leaving on the ninth.
Ninth.
Yeah, for the trip. So yeah, I can, we can make that work.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Keller.
And so the people that, that haven't gone to the, to Washington. A lot of this, we could say whatever we want. They're going to tell us where the pot of gold is if they're available, how hard the fight's going to be. Uh, and. I don't think we back down from applying for everything. We, we go for everything. You know, we don't say, oh, well, we're not going to do it. It's just what's reasonable and everything else. That's why. Ranking them and, and uh, getting public input. The only thing that I think I'd rather want more from public is, is there an item that we're missing? But other than that, I think we go for everything. I don't think.
And I definitely don't want to just open this up to.
Yeah.
To, to many subjects.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I, you. How long is a piece of spring, right? So I don't, I mean, I think. Something to keep in mind. Again, we have to come up with a twenty percent match on something like this. So um. So I'll have to, there, there's quite a bit that goes into this. One of the things that I will be doing uh, that is. Now that we have this list, taking it back to our um. Supporter group and you know, getting their feedback on it as well. So.
So I believe it was Commissioner Keller that I. I thought we were asked to rank these.
You, you certainly can. I don't, it's.
They're all viable projects, so I don't, I would agree. I don't think, right, I don't see the value in ranking them.
Well, my, my point is having gone to DC and begged for money for the military, um, you know, how you present the order. And they go, oh, yeah, that makes sense. You know, you need to get Ramsey Weeks and you need to have this two million dollar project and. Oh yeah, you've promised this to a community center for a long time. And then you kind of get them on your side versus we just want all this money and these are all the projects. So. You know, how you say it really makes a lot of difference in the order you put it in, kind of rank order you put it in makes them think, well, you, you've thought it over. That's all I'm getting at is it, it needs to be a reasonable presentation. And that's why, you know, I'm glad Commissioner Keller brought that up because it does. That's why I wanted to look at it and say, you know, how would I present this if I was asking for the money? And, and the quicker we can get that to county manager, the better. And then we can always add some other things in if the community says, oh my gosh, we really need to control water going down Day Lane in Smith Valley or whatever. Okay. So that's my point.
Okay.
Any other point here?
Nope.
Nope. So. It's uh, any public input on this? If not, then uh.
It, it says for uh, possible action. Do we need to take action or? Or you pretty much could go.
Um.
That's why it was possible.
Yeah, for possible action.
So if you would like me to bring this back at the next meeting, maybe a motion just to bring it. I don't.
I don't need it back. Uh, if you're willing to take phone calls from all the members to just for some opinions, but not necessarily bring it back. I mean.
Yeah.
Dave, Dave mentioned that he wanted to be able to call you.
The, the motion would be provide direction, which we're doing.
Yeah, I can't, we can't do the, the phone call thing and.
Yeah.
I'm good to go then.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to. Basically, we've given you directions. So my motion to be that we've given you some direction on prioritizing and uh. Um, whether second on that direction.
Second.
Okay, the motion is to, the direction is to prioritize and put it together. We believe the items that you've listed are. Good. And if we come up with anything else, we'll advise you of that. So. Um, my motion and the second by Commissioner Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Marching orders are done. It looks like agenda requests I have done. Commissioner Hendricks.
Um, something I've been thinking about is uh, we have all of these solar projects and so many of them are happening in Mason Valley. And there's also the Hud Bay mining that affects Mason Valley as well. And I wanted to see what it would take for us to reestablish Mason Valley's advisory boards so that this valley had a voice.
Okay. So your, your request to be put. That on the agenda.
Yes, please. Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, yeah, I, this isn't maybe for next time, but when is it too early to ask waste management about the Silver Springs transfer station plans? Have they presented anything? I know that that was a big one and. It was just brought up today and so. Um, maybe down the road, uh, sounds like March first, uh, the contract starts. So maybe. The first meeting in March where you ask them to come in and share their plans.
Commissioner Keller. Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
I don't have none.
I don't have any either. So we'll move on to Commissioner final comments here. Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Right, uh, so I just want to comment real quickly. Um, it, it is, uh, I appreciate the advisory boards and, and what they do. And when we, uh, I save Michael Irvin's um. After twelve years of service to the community in this capacity has become very clear that my service is neither valued or needed. Um, I don't know that letters like this are sounding board for getting more volunteers for boards. So. Uh, I hate to hear that it's, and I read one earlier with the exclamation marks. Um. Uh, maybe we invite Silver State Advisory Board down.
Be, or can do that.
Um, but. I just hate to hear that our volunteers are leaving disgruntled. So that's my comment, not a request.
Thank you, everybody for their inputs today and we're going to move on to public participation. No action will be taken on any item until it properly agenda is participated. The public participation will be held this time. But maybe return to it anytime during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak, public participation, or as the states are named for the record and will be limited to three minutes. And we'll conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item which we've gone through, but before the board takes any action. Do I have any final public participation for the day? Seeing none on Zoom. Do I have any here? Thing, three publics left. Um. If not, we do have a closed session today from my understanding and uh, our regular meeting is adjourned at. Twelve thirty one and we'll do the close session now.
Oh, we'll be fine.